So I don't know who Mary is, but it's actually not me. So sorry about that, whoever you are, Mary. I'm actually a load of letters and numbers.
Um, it's Sabrina there?
I am.
Um, could you send Jan a link? Um, she's actually struggling from the PDF.
Right, okay, yeah. Yeah, and she's, she's got...
Evening Sue.
She's got councillor Joan Briggs with her as well.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I think Sabrina, are you gonna email it Sabrina?
Yeah, I am, yeah.
Yeah, she's gonna email you a direct link, um, to it. If that's... When you... Yeah, can I have everything down? When your email comes, if you, um, open that. Okay, do you want me to hang on the phone with you?
I'm glad it's not just me.
Yeah.
Want our coffee maker in the background? It makes me want to have a cup of coffee now.
That works.
Look at me, teacher.
My castor cream.
Oh, you were, um, you might be better on your telephone. Google phone.
If I keep looking up and down, I'm just moving from screen to screen. All right.
Right, I've got some people that are...
There's, um, Brad Lee, and, um, a long sort of number in letters thing. Just checking they aren't councillors, but I don't know who they are.
Yeah, sorry Sabrina, you might have missed that bit, but I actually don't think I'm Mary. I'm MCG15082772. You just both started with, um, sorry, it's an ID number.
I think you can telephone him, Jan. He's not...
I did actually have Jan, like a while ago, I'm not sure where she's been.
I thought I heard her. I thought I heard Jan.
Yeah.
Yes, she was in.
Yeah, 'cause you've got on to all the others, haven't you? Do you want me to ask Sabrina to ring you? Because she might know a little bit better than me. Yeah. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave you, because I've asked Sabrina to ring you. Um, okay, all right. Hope to see you shortly. All right, bye bye.
I'll be very otherworldly.
Um, Sabrina, did you see my little note about ringing Jan?
I'm just trying to do it now.
Okay, thank you.
Is she on a mobile or on the phone?
Um, I, I think she phoned me off for a mobile.
Evening Ray. It's no good having a mask on, still recognise you.
I know, yeah.
Oh, you made it this time then, Bob?
No, I know, yeah.
You struggled with the technology last time, didn't you?
Although, me to be fair, because I've done exactly the same thing. I mean, lot of error messages came up, I just clicked and hoped.
Yeah.
How's John?
Right, I just sent you one.
Yeah. Don't talk pussy cat.
Have you seen Joan? Is Joan about?
I think she's with Jan. Um, that's why they're trying, um, so that they... Because Joan couldn't use the technology, so she's with Jan, so, and they're just trying to log on now. Um, but struggling, I think.
Ah, Theresa. I woke you up then, didn't I?
Yeah, I was just in my little dream world then, John. Go on, what was it?
Oh. Um, how are you finding being back at uni?
Well, I've only actually had one day back so far, um...
You said you're going to prep then, next week, is it?
Yeah, well, I'm suppo- I was meant to be back in on Monday, but there's the paperwork's not complete. So it's looking like Tuesday now. Um, because me and my boss, who's the, um, safety officer for the school, we went around all the corridors, putting one-way systems in and signs up and hand sanitizer and sort of done that sort of thing in the labs as well. So, uh, they're ready to go. So we've done everything we can, we're just waiting for estates to sort of...
To be signed off.
Yeah, but yeah, the safety office signed it off, but it was, um, I think it was something to do with the hot water supply. That some sort of flushing's got to happen, the janeller checks and stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because it's been standing.
Yeah, because it's part of the protocols for opening up a building that's been barren.
It's really weird, because at our place, we're in, you know where you saw me? By that garage off the Derby Road?
Yeah.
That's our T-shirt workshop and all that lot. We've got, we've got one single... For a sign, I'm saying I'm the person that's a tie.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're usually going two and three, then, it's like, hmm.
Ah, right, I can see someone. Yes, I can see them all.
Hi, John.
How can you get to see everybody?
Okay, thank you. Thanks very much. All right. Bye bye, love. Right, Joan, poke your head round here. So they can see you.
Yeah, you've got...
This is Joan.
We can't see you.
We can't see anybody.
Oh, that's because my camera's switched off. And it won't switch on. Oh, this is what started it off before.
Oh, it's gone again.
It's gone with me.
Oh.
There we are, back to normal. Right, my camera's not switching off. On.
Might have to give it a second, if you just click it on and just wait and see.
Or unplug it.
It's just locked me out completely now.
It's not essential to have your camera on, I don't think. We can hear.
But can you see, well, you can't see Joan either, but I've got Joan here and it's very important. Ah, I think it's on.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
I think if Joan, if Joan can just make sure she speaks, though.
Don't speak.
Hello.
Yeah, well, what we're gonna do is mute everybody so that when we speak...
We can see you now, Jan.
Yeah, Aunt Joan?
Where?
Down here, like, in this corner.
Oh.
So we're okay, we're ready to go.
Yeah.
So, I can sit back. You can relax, Joan.
Yeah.
Right, I'm just going to mute everybody, so there's got so much feedback going on, because I've got it in stereo triple sound. Um, so just bear with, okay? Right, so if you just unmute yourself.
Yeah, when you're ready. Is Johnny, John McGrath?
Yes.
Is it? Oh, all right, okay. I'm not very photogenic, Ray. Yeah. Are we ready then?
Yes, a few minutes.
Okay, right. Uh, my fellow town councillors, I'd like to give thanks to Sabrina, Sophie, and the staff of the town council for their assistance during my term of office. And it would be very remiss of me not to mention Ella as leader of the council, and Sue for her marvellous photography. Okay, it has been a privilege to represent the town council at so many events and be part of so many wonderful occasions. The Italian meal at the Mayor's Broxton appeal, strawberry tea at Diggin, dining in with the ATC, and the Christmas dinner with the helpful bureau. All held a special place in my memories of good foods I had a chance to sample. One of the highlights of my civic year was being able to share with so many friends, family and colleagues the town, the town council's civic service, which this year was held at St Helen's... Oh, sorry, St Helen's Church. One of the last engagements I attended before we had lockdown held us in its iron grid. I also attended the civic service for the Mayor of Broxton and the Southern Minster County Council Service. Even so, being town mayor is about meeting the wonderful people, young and old of the town. The enhancement of our parks for the need of the younger generation has been an interest, interesting feature of my, of my year. As it opened with the recreation ground on Higgins Lane, opening the multi-use games area and, uh, and it just, and recreation. Oh, no, I've lost my bloody brain now. Even so, the mayor's, that being town mayor is, is all, is about meeting wonderful people, young and old of the town. The enhancement of our parks for the needs of the younger people, our younger, our younger, younger generation has been an interesting feature of my year. As it opened with the recreation ground on Higgins Lane, being their multi-use games area, and just, and just ended with a visit to Ilkyston Road Recreation Ground, where Nottingham Forest coaches came to coach the local children. Christmas was also a busy time with Christmas tree festivals and lights in the town square. While there was an interesting number of booths at the square despite the cold and unhelpful weather. I have opened shops like Oakus Pokus on the main street, uh, main, main road, and attended openings of the refurbishment, refurbishment of Rockwell Court. However, it's not all celebration. There is, there is a privilege of representing the town on Remembrance Sunday at the Walter Parker Square. Uh, or being at the Holocaust Memorial Event in January. The town council sponsors and supports many events and organisations. And I've just given you a taste of how busy it can actually be. Unfortunately, the latter part of my year was closed down and, uh, and some of my happy, happy events, like the carnival, Hemlock happening, VE Day celebrations, could not be, uh, could not go ahead. I hope the new mayor has the chance to celebrate all these occasions without any problems. And finally, just like to say, thank you for letting me be your town mayor. Okay, that's it. Okay. You want that?
Well done, Ray. Um, can I just say how nice it was to accompany you, um, for the golf competition and taking the photographs, even though we did get wet a few times?
It was, yes, that's true, yeah, yeah. Then again, the weather's been less than nice on a lot of occasions, but, uh, we got, we got through it, that's the main thing. Have we done apologies for absence?
No.
Right. So can, can we say apologies for absence? There is none, is it?
Um, Chair, I've not had any, um, but I don't know if Epi's here or whether or not she's sent her apologies.
Who, sorry?
Um, Elizabeth Epton.
Oh, right, okay. Is Elizabeth here? No, no.
I think, I think Elizabeth Epton isn't, uh, isn't able to come today. Unfortunately, she's, uh, she's had some personal issues recently that I won't go into for obvious reasons, but, uh, but I'm sure that she's sent her apologies.
Okay. Okay, now we've come to the election of the town mayor. That's item two. We have nominations, nominations? Yes. Do we have any nomin- nominations?
Uh, yes, Mr Mayor, I would like to nominate Jan Gould.
Okay.
Mr Mayor, I would like to nominate Richard McCray, and I would like to reserve the right to say a few words to that end, if you may, if I may.
Okay, do we have seconds?
Um, I'll second Jan.
I'll second Richard.
Okay, have we got that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if I could just also say a few words I'd like to as well.
Okay. Right, just let me have time to listen. Right, so we've got, uh, can we start with Richard McCray for this? Uh, we've got a second, have we got a second? Okay, oh yes, I'm sorry, Simon, is it Simon?
It's me, yeah.
Yeah, okay, right, could we have a vote for Richard?
Hang on, he wants, um, the guy that's proposed him, Tim, would like to say a few words first.
Oh, sorry, okay. Okay, Tim.
Um, yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, it's with great pleasure that I take the opportunity to nominate councillor McCray. He is an absolute asset to this community. Um, I have never met anybody willing to work so hard for the people of Stapleford. And literally, from, from early in the morning until late at night, I guarantee that Richard is doing something for Stapleford. Um, over the, uh, over the last couple of years, um, and, and especially over the last year and a bit, uh, that I've been a, um, a fellow borough councillor and town councillor with Richard myself. Um, I know that I can ring him up at any time of day or night, and he will always help out. And, uh, and I know that he extends, he extends that help to, uh, to anybody that asks. Um, and that is a, you know, makes for a real asset to our town. Um, I think that, much like yourself, Mr Mayor, I think that, uh, I think that I can speak for Richard when I say that he is very disappointed that in, in his duty as your deputy mayor, that that's been somewhat cut short by COVID-19. But I know that, uh, that he's enjoyed every single moment that he's been able to get out there and support you as the mayor. And, uh, and I think it's only fitting that we, uh, that we honour such a diligent servant of the public, uh, with the, uh, with the, the logical succession to mayor of Stapleford. Um, so thank you very much, Mr Mayor, and I, and I hope the council will bear that in mind.
Okay. Is that that?
Yes, Chair.
Yeah, can I, uh, speak on behalf of Jan?
Yes, of course, yes, that's Sue.
Yeah, um, yeah, um, as obviously, um, the town council is now gender balanced. Um, and the last time we've had a male mayor, last year, the year before, um, and I'm thinking, when was the last time we had a female mayor?
It was Sue, Sue Summer, wasn't it? Sue, uh...
Um, I mean, how long ago was that? Can anybody actually remember?
Four years.
Four years, so I just think, um, just to be, you know, a bit more equality, it would actually be nice to have a female mayor this time round and try and alternate it, um, every year going forward. No disrespect to Richard, I know you do a marvellous job, um, in the community. Um, but, as, I mean, you're deputy mayor of Fura, so you'll be mayor of Fura next year. Um, it would ni- it would actually be really nice to give somebody else a chance um, to do this civic duty and, you know, um, that, that's my personal feelings. Um, and I know, you know, um, Jan would make a really nice mayor, she's, you know, good with that kind of thing. So, there you go.
Okay. Have we got that, Jan? Uh, Sue, Sabrina, sorry.
Yes, Chair.
You're on the list, don't worry.
Do you want to ask the, um, candidates to say a few words as well, or are we going straight to the vote?
Yes, would the, would the candidates like to say something? Richard, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I'd, uh, sorry, I couldn't get my mic to work. Um, I, I, what I'd like to say, I'd like, I'd say, Tim's kind of said it all. Obviously, I've enjoyed supporting the mayor and nat- naturally, I thought it was something that would be happening. Um, I suppose lots of people were really, but that's not how it goes, is it? It's, it's done democratically and it's down to the councillors to, to vote how they see fit, and however the councillors vote, that it is what it is. Um, but yeah, no, of course I'd like to have a go at being the mayor of Stapleford. To, to me, it's, it's not higher than being the mayor of Broxton, it's different, it's Stapleford, isn't it? It's where I live, it's where I love, and it's where I do everything. Um, like I say, it's, it's down to the councillors to, to put the votes to the, whatever, we put them, online, I suppose. And, and then we, we see what happens, don't we? So, yeah, thank you.
Okay, and, uh, Jan?
Ray, may I speak?
Yes.
Well, anybody that knows me knows that I'm passionate about Stapleford. I've lived here for 45 years and brought up my four sons, they've all been educated here before going to university and making their own way into the world. I'm a pupil person, I am very, very busy. I know, uh, Richard has a heavy workload, so, so do I. Um, during the pandemic, it hasn't stopped me, I've been raising money for local charities on, on a regular basis. I care about Stapleford, I care about the people, and I will serve them well if I'm lucky enough to be elected. I do think that, um, to be a mayor in two places, maybe not uh, such a good idea, but however, that's entirely up to Richard if he thinks he can manage it. But I know for definite that I can manage it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, you got all that?
Can we go to the vote?
Yes, can we go to the vote now, please?
Just bear with me a second. So if you want to read through the names, and I will tick off who says for, so ask them to say for, against, or abstain.
Yes, okay.
And then I'll tick them off as we go, and then I'll give you the total of votes at the end.
Uh, councillor Atherton. Sorry?
Who are you voting for? Sorry, just, um...
You've got your mic off, you've got your mic.
Can you make it clear who this is, who they're voting for?
Sorry, yeah, it's just for Richard McCray, I'm sorry. Richard McCray.
So if we can go through the list?
If we go through the list.
And ask, um, everybody to say whether they're voting for, against, or they're abstaining for, um, the candidate at the moment, which is Richard McCray.
Okay, the candidate first is Richard McCray. Uh, councillor Atherton. You've got your mic off, Eileen. The microphone's...
I'm, anyway. I'm not for Richard McCray, no, I want Jan Gould.
Are you, are you ga- against? You're against.
I'm against.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ross. That's Ross.
Against.
All right. Briggs, councillor Briggs. Go.
Jan, I think it's going to be Joan to give her vote, um, for Richard, whether she's for, against, or...
Are you for or against? For Richard, Ja- uh...
Are you asking Joan?
Joan, yes.
Jan, you're voting for Richard now, so...
Against, can you say it? Against.
Against, okay. Councillor Brown, Bob.
Don't think you can do two at the same time.
You're muted, sorry. I'm not muted now, so, uh, I'm for Richard McCray. Do I, do I vote?
Yes, you get to vote as well.
Okay.
It's down to Ray.
E- uh, Epton.
Sorry, I'm a tax...
I, I shall vote aga- for, sorry.
For Richard.
Yes, please.
Fuck, please let us down.
And you're live on mic.
Sorry, can I just call a point of order? I've just heard somebody swearing, that's live on air, that's not very professional at all, thank you.
Have you heard? They're swearing.
Unfortunately, uh, Sue had the mic on and we all heard what she said. It was a slip of the tongue, but it is what it is.
Okay.
Yes, I apologise for that, it was a slip of the tongue, um, so I apologise, sorry.
Epton. Well, she's not there, okay. Simon.
I'm for Richard.
Uh, Jan, well, obviously you're going to be against, aren't you? Yes? Jan.
Sorry, you're asking me?
Yes.
I'm against.
Okay. Uh, councillor Grindel.
For Richard.
For Richard. Jess Hallam.
For Richard.
Uh, Tim Hallam.
Most definitely for Richard.
Right. Uh, Hallam Davis, councillor Davis.
For Richard.
John Hawkins.
Hello, uh, for.
For. Thank you. Ella. Sarah Kearney.
Against.
Richard McCray.
I'm gonna say for, it'd be wrong if I didn't.
Yeah, okay, yes. Theresa Needham.
It's a difficult one, um, I'm gonna go against.
You go against, thank you. Oh, and John McGrath.
Against.
And Sue Patterson.
Um, against.
Sorry, that's right. Against. Okay. Okay. Nine for, eight against. Is that you here?
Yep, we need to take the votes for Jan as well, mate.
So, it's for Richard McCrae?
No, we need to take the votes for Jan first.
Sorry?
We need to take the voting for Jan.
We take the vote for Jan?
Yes, all we've done at the moment is decide who's voting for or against Richard, now need to decide who's voting for or against Jan.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we do the same again, but yeah, for Jan, okay, fine. Right, now we go for Jan. Okay?
No, no, no.
Eileen.
For Jan.
For Jan. Ross, muffin, chopping here.
For.
Briggs, Joan Briggs. councillor Briggs.
Eileen, Joan, we need Joan's vote, please.
Joan, Joan.
For.
Four, okay.
Did you hear, Joan?
Four.
Yes, yes, Bob Brown.
I'm voting twice.
I voted once.
Bob Brown.
Sorry, against, nothing against Jan, but against.
Right. It's me, I'm afraid, this is one of the oddest decisions I've ever had, quite honest, but I think Richard was elected when he served mayor as deputy all that time, you know, he's always been there, he's supported me, so, I mean, I'm afraid I've got to vote against Jan, I'm sorry. Okay. Epton's, Epton's not here, is that right?
Yeah, that's right, we'll sign him next.
Okay, Simon.
With apologies, against.
Against. Okay. Jan Gould, well, you're before. David Grindel. David Grindel. David?
Yeah, against.
Grindel, David Grindel.
That's right, against.
Jess Hallam.
Against.
Tim Hallam.
Against.
Hallam Davis, Hallam Davis, sorry.
Against.
John Hawkins.
You can't vote for two people the same, so it's got to be against, sorry.
Against, thank you. Ella Kearney.
For.
Richard McCrae.
Against.
John McGrath.
For.
Theresa Needham.
For, sounds like golf, doesn't it?
And Sue Patterson.
For.
Okay. That's worked out again, we're saying.
Just come around to me again. No, they're not coming around to me again.
Fine. Eight for. Okay, so now I declare that Richard McCrae, declare Richard McCrae is the, or will be the mayor. I am sorry about that, everyone. I don't like being, because I'd end up with the casting vote and, as I say, Richard's been supporting me for so long. I do appreciate that, I mean, I don't know what Richard's concerns will be, because he's going to have so much work on. But, you know, he's served this community extremely well, he's done, anyway, I'm just, I'm sorry, I do congratulate. Oh, yes.
She's John Hutton's mother.
I just. Just a moment.
We'll just make sure our microphones are muted when we're not talking to business, please.
Okay. That's it?
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, well, I've got a declaration of acceptance of office to read out here, I've just signed it and it was witnessed by the town clerk, sorry, there's a bit of echo in the background. I, Richard McCrae, having been elected to the office of Town Mayor of the Council of the town of Stapleford, hereby declare that I take this head office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties thereof according to the best of my judgement and ability. And obviously, that's dated today, twenty-fourth of July, twenty-twenty. And can I just thank everybody who voted for me, I appreciate that. And, yeah, obviously, I'll do my best and I think that's all I can say at the minute, I'll go back over there in the naughty corner.
Congratulations, Mr Mayor.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Richard.
Found my button, sorry about that. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, everybody, is the election of Deputy Town Mayor. So, does anyone have any nominations for the, this year for Deputy Town Mayor? Richard, isn't it?
Mr Mayor, councillor Grindel here, yes, I wish to nominate Si Frost, Simon Frost, known as Si.
Okay, thank you, that's appreciated, councillor Grindel, does anyone else have any nominations?
Could we, somebody nominate an actual woman for the role?
Point of order. Point of order, nominations are nominations and if you don't have one, then really, I don't think you've got a place to comment about it. If you want to nominate somebody irrespective of their gender, I would choose to, I would suggest you do so, councillor.
Okay, and nominate Theresa Needham then.
Okay, thank you, so we've got two, sorry, does somebody want to second that nomination?
I will second that, Jan Gould.
Thank you for that, councillor Gould, did anybody second the nomination for councillor Simon Frost?
I'll second Simon, that someone else is due to do it.
Okay, thank you, so, thank you councillor Bob Brown, okay, so we've got two nominations and we've got, they've both been proposed and they've both been seconded, so we'll start with Theresa.
Can I speak on behalf of Theresa, please?
Yeah, you certainly can, is that councillor McGrath, you certainly can, would you like to go now?
Yes, yeah, I'd like to speak on behalf of Theresa for one reason, nothing to do with, what did Tim say, gender or whatever, no, I'd like to just say one thing, right, since the lady has become involved in the town council, her knowledge and all that and what she's given to the town council is tremendous. I think she has a varied ideas and quite a cross knowledge of the green issues at the town that is going forward, she, you know, is, helps, she's helped a lot, I think she's improved all the, the knowledge of the town councillors round her, that I've always believed that we need a younger breed, I don't know how old she is, we are being rude, but I think, you know, enthusiasm is forward with her and I think this is what a town council is, hopefully will get more, more, is the word power or more chance to use the people we've got within the town council, I think Theresa would be an ideal person. Whether she'll have the time again, which was brought up about you councillor McCrae, is another matter, but I'm sure she'll dedicate herself to what I believe she deserves the position.
Okay, thank you.
Mr Mayor, may I just please a point of order, please? Could we perhaps ask Theresa if she wants to accept the nomination, because I think that might have been a bit off the cuff and I'm not sure if she wants to do it or not.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be a good idea, Theresa, are you happy to accept the nomination?
I am very flattered that you've picked me, Sue, but to be honest, I would prefer Si to take it this time, I know he really wants it, so on this point, I, because obviously, I know that there's a big daytime commitment for mayor for the roles and I do work in the day and I would not be available, so I'm sorry, but for this particular role at this point, I don't think I could do it justice, maybe in the future, but not at this point. So, thank you for the nice things that you said, John, and thank you, Sue, for the nomination and Jan for seconding, but yeah, I wasn't expecting that, so yeah, I'll happy to hand that over to Si.
I'll get that back there soon.
Can I just say thank you to councillor Needham as well, because that's quite honourable of you to do that, thank you.
Excuse me, can I speak?
Sorry, who?
Excuse me, can I speak?
Yeah, I don't know who's asking to speak, sorry.
I'm Eileen Atherton.
I can see you now, sorry, right. Yeah, you've got your mic on mute.
Your mic's off, Eileen. Your mic is off.
She's muted.
That's it.
That's it.
Can I nominate Jan Gould to Deputy Mayor?
You certainly can, councillor Atherton, have we got somebody who would like to second that?
I'll second Jan, I will second Jan. If Jan wants to accept it.
Thank you, thank you Theresa, yes, I will accept it gladly, thank you. And thank you, Eileen.
Mr Mayor, as I'm.
Would you like to speak on behalf of Simon?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. First of all, Mr Mayor, I congratulate you on your new post as mayor. I've known councillor Si, which he likes to be called, but it's Simon is his proper name, for many years, his work with businesses within our town and also he has tried to help a lot of residents in the area, this is a good thing. And what I like about Simon is that if he doesn't know the answer, he comes to somebody else and tries to get the answer, which is a good thing and not all councillors do that, but Simon does. Simon's been working hard with Theresa, obviously, on the neighbourhood plan, also he's done quite a bit on planning issues, he's a great family man, and his wife, Jackie, who stands behind him in solidarity of all the things he does. And I'm happy to nominate Si for the post and as Deputy Mayor for Stapleford Town Council for twenty to twenty-one. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you for that and would the person that seconded it like to speak before we move on to the next one?
Hi, well. Yeah.
Okay, would this person that seconded Simon like to speak at all?
Hello, I was the person who seconded, yes, I've known Simon before this administration and I've known him to be, I think he's the most patient out of all of us, I mean, all of us want to get our way in, but Simon waits his turn, it's sometimes seen as a lack of passion, but it's still there burning and then he puts his point forward nice and quietly, which I think is a good thing for mayorial duties, I forgot to say. The other thing is, I'm not sure we've got anybody that would represent physical, being a carer, I mean, there's lots and lots of carers out there and to have someone who sort of advertised himself as a carer would perhaps make these people feel not quite so alone.
Okay, thank you for that and would anyone like to speak on behalf of councillor Jan Gould's nomination?
Yes, me.
councillor Atherton.
Yeah, you're doing it again, aren't you? Here you are, somehow or other, where is the equality in all this? What about, you know, what about us women having a chance? Here again.
Can I speak?
And Jan will be excellent and Jan has got, you know, she's retired, she would be, make an excellent mayor and besides Deputy Mayor and besides that, she has actually lived in Stapleford for all those years, that should count for something.
I, I, Eileen, thank you for that, Richard, councillor McCrae, Mayor.
Yeah, councillor McGrath, would you like to speak?
I'll just say one thing here, I mean, to be fair to Jan, I think both me, you and her, Jan have had our differences for a long time and going through what we're all listening to now, I think, as Eileen has pointed out, as I pointed out earlier, to get that gender balance, and I know that's nothing to do with it, but it might be an idea, or I'm definitely going to vote for Jan anyway, it might be an idea if that Jan was considered on merits as well. It also brings cross-party, which we're all in, well, we're all in it for the people of Stapleford, but we need to start thinking now that we need to move the town forward and I think Jan would be ideal for that and I'll say it, whether I'm out of order or not, she sounds a bit posh, but sometimes that persona, sorry, might help us pursue ourselves as a better town or as a respectable town, if you know what I mean. We need to have people who know how to portray themselves in the right position.
And people that know the town.
Okay, I appreciate that, councillors, thank you very much.
Mr Mayor, can I, since it's not just proposals and seconders, can I say a few words in support of councillor Frost, please?
Okay, if you're quick, Mr Allen.
Thank you very much, I'll be as quick as John was. I think that Si is a lifelong local, for one thing, let that not go unnoticed and I can honestly say, in the years I've known Si, I do not know anybody more caring, I do not know anybody more passionate and I do not know anybody that is more willing to go out on a limb against all odds to support his neighbours and friends. Si has proven himself to not be partisan in any way she'll perform, he tries his best to be everybody's friend and sometimes that's his greatest weakness, but as for the position of Deputy Mayor, I think that's his greatest strength.
Right, that's appreciated and thank you councillors. So, the next thing we need to do, we need to move to the vote, so we'll start with the first one that's nominated, which was Si Frost, so you're either voting for, against or abstaining and I've got a register thing here, so I'll go down in order from the top and if you can make it very clear and then just give me a few seconds to shout across to the town clerk to make sure we've got the same figures, so if we can start with councillor Atherton, or this is your voting for Simon or against, abstaining, against. against. Okay. Councillor Bowfinger, I think I've said that right. Is Ross there?
I am, I was just unmuting myself. This is, this is really hard. This is very difficult. Because I can see both people do a good job. I'm going to vote for.
So you're voting for Si. Okay, councillor Briggs.
Against.
Against. Councillor Brown? Or councillor Derby?
Against.
You say councillor Epton's not here, is she? Okay, councillor Frost?
For.
Councillor Gould?
Against.
Councillor Grindel?
For.
Councillor Jay Hallam?
Four.
Councillor T Hallam?
For, Simon.
Councillor Hallam Davis?
Four.
Councillor Hawkins?
Four.
Councillor Kearney?
I was completely not expecting this, to be honest. And I'm really struggling. Just, and this is solely because I'm a feminist, I'm going against because I do agree with that argument, but Simon, I will have absolutely no hesitation nominating you and voting for you next time. I'm really sorry, it was really difficult.
Well, thank you for that. Oh, councillor McCrae, that's myself. I'm going to say for. Councillor McGrath?
Against.
Councillor Neadham?
This is very difficult. I'm personal friends with Si. I hope he does speak to me in the future. But obviously, I voted for Jan in the first round, so I'm going to have to vote against. I'm really sorry.
Okay, that's appreciated. And councillor, sorry, councillor Patterson?
Hi. Yeah, I find this really difficult because like a lot of you, I've known Si for a lot of years and I know he's a very balanced person and a really nice person to work with. But on, on balance, just to level things up slightly, I'm going to have to go against. I'm really sorry, Si. And like Ella, I'd be more than happy to nominate you and speak on your behalf at a later date.
Okay, I'm just going to, thank you, that's really appreciated. And I think Si will appreciate the kind words of you all as well. Just give me one second to just go and stick my head through the door and double check the figures with the councillor, with the town clerk, and then I'll come back and do the second one. Okay, so, so the results there was nine for Simon. And sorry, nine for councillor Frost and eight for councillor Gould. So we'll do, we'll do the second vote now. So you're voting for, against or abstaining for councillor Gould's position of deputy mayor. So again, we'll start from the top. So councillor Atherton?
For.
Councillor Bowfinger, am I pronouncing that right?
No, it's Boffinger, but I answer to all sorts.
I apologize for that. I'll get it.
No problem. Like I said before, it's difficult. Against.
Okay, right, so the next one, councillor Briggs?
For.
Councillor Brown?
I'm glad Theresa didn't go in as well, as my head would have blown off. It's really difficult, but again, I'm sorry, but you'd be living good.
Councillor Derby?
This is one of the hardest decisions I've had to make and I shall go for, I'm afraid. I'm sorry, Simon. I really appreciate the work you've done for me as well and supported me.
Thank you. Councillor Epton's obviously not here. Councillor Frost?
Yeah, against, I'm afraid.
Councillor Gould?
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Grindel?
Against, I'm afraid.
Councillor Jay Hallam?
Against.
Councillor T Hallam?
Against, it's got nothing to do with gender, just personality.
Councillor Hallam Davis?
Against.
Councillor Hawkins?
Oh, sorry, against.
Councillor Kearney?
And four, and it's nothing to do with personality. It's to do with gender. Thank you.
Councillor McCrae, that's myself. And I'm going to say against. Councillor McGrath?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Neadham?
Four.
Councillor Patterson?
Four.
Okay, thank you. So just, just give us a second or two and then we'll... Okay, so we've just confirmed that and it's the same again. So it's councillor Simon Frost has been duly elected as the deputy mayor to serve this remainder of this term up until the next meeting. So congratulations and thank you everyone for your kind words that you said about everybody. I'm sure everybody appreciates that. So thank you, Si Frost. And thank you, everybody else. Congratulations.
If I can just say something very quickly. Thank you for everybody. Thank you for everybody that voted. Whichever way you voted, thank you.
Okay. Right, so the next item on the agenda is item five, which is declarations of interest. Does anyone have any declarations of interest for the town clerk to take notes of?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Grindel, Brockster Borough Council, and including planning.
Okay.
Councillor Eileen Atherton, the usual one, just as a councillor for Brockster Borough Council.
Okay, anybody else?
Councillor Jan Gould, councillor, Brockster councillor.
Thank you.
Councillor Derby.
Councillor Tim Hallam, Brockster Borough councillor, I'm happy to announce no longer planning, so, so there we go.
Yeah, anyone else?
Councillor McGrath, allotments, Stafford Town Board and also Brockster Borough Council.
And I suppose our best to clear an interest in Brockster Borough Council as well. And anyone else?
To clear an interest on the executive board for Stapleford's town, town deal.
Yeah, I suppose our best to clear an interest in that as well, in case anything comes up on that one as well.
Mr. Mayor, I have to declare the executive board on the town as well.
On the board, right?
Yeah.
That's appreciated, everybody, thank you. So I'll just give the town clerk a second or two to write that down. It's quite difficult when I can't see her.
I'm having a camera day.
Oh, okay, there you go. Thank you for that. Okay, so the next item is item six, to appoint statutory all standing committees. So has everybody got that paperwork for that?
Yep.
Does the town clerk need to speak on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I can just go through, there's a couple of committees. I've recently updated today the updated sheet with the nominations on it. There's still a space on the finance and general purposes committee and the planning and environment committee. I've not had the nominations from the Conservative members actually, so they might fill those spots. And then there's an extra on the neighbourhood plan steering group and the allotment steering group. So we'll need to vote on those as to who actually gets the seats.
Is that something that we need to do now?
Yes, because we need to set up the committees for the coming year so that we can start to meet.
Okay, I appreciate that. So does, has everyone got that sheet up in front of them? And does anyone have extra nominations to...
Yes, can I, can I nominate? Eileen Atherton, please, for the finance and general purposes committee.
Yeah.
I would like to nominate myself on the HR and policy committee, please.
Thank you.
We still have a gap on planning and environment.
Joan Briggs on planning and environment.
Okay. And more?
Are we okay on that one now?
Mr. Mayor, if it, if it helps, I'm happy to put my name forward for traffic and transport if, if that's it. If, oh no, sorry, I read that that was a gap in the paper. No, it's all right, ignore me, ignore me, I'm misreading.
Right, so the committees that we've got excess members on then are HR and policy review and the allotment steering group. So if I'm... Maybe somebody wants to not be on it and they'll step down or you can vote.
Excuse me, town clerk, we're getting some sort of problem with, with a voice coming from your area.
Sorry, it's because we've got two laptops back to back in the same room. So the two, the HR and policy review committee has one too many people nominated for it, as does the allotment steering group.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It's true, it's true, you, how arbitrary or non arbitrary are the numbers? Because since there is no, as, as in, as the town clerk points out in the report, there is no proportionality consideration on town and parish councils. And so surely if there are more people that want to sit on a committee, that committee can just get bigger. It's not going to upset the balance. So I don't see the, I don't see the problem with having additional on really, unless the town clerk would like to tell me I'm wrong, in which case I'm happy to take expert's advice.
Through the mayor, it's, it's just that that's what's in your terms of reference. That's what you've agreed as the number of committees. So if council wants to increase the membership, then that, then that's something that can be done, but obviously that's got to be moved and seconded to do that.
Okay, so does anybody want to move and then second that proposal?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to increase the capacity for HR from seven to eight and the allotments committee from three to four, allotments group from three to four.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. And does anyone want to second that proposal?
I'll second that, Jan Gould.
Thank you, councillors. And so we've got to take that one to the vote.
Can I propose an amendment, please, Mr. Mayor?
You can propose one.
The amendment that I proposed, I think it's a great idea, but since we're already struggling with the arbitrary nature of the numbers based on what people have previously decided, why don't we just scrap the numbers entirely instead of just setting new ones that may go out of date, just like the old ones has gone out of date?
What's your advice on that, town clerk, please?
Chair, we have to say how many members we're going to have on a committee because otherwise everybody can turn up and then it might as well be a council meeting. So we do need to set how many we're going to have. Just so that you're aware as well, sorry, the neighbourhood plan steering group has got an excess appointment as well, so that one will need to be altered.
Okay, so did the first, sorry, was it councillor Kearney that proposed that we change the...
Yes, that's right, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Would you like to propose that on the neighbourhood plan one as well, to include that?
Yes, yeah, I can, I can propose an amendment to my original motion and have that to include the neighbourhood plan, from five members to six members.
I appreciate it, thank you. And is there anyone to second that?
I think I'll second that because it's always been open to all. But, yeah, as I say, it's always been open to all.
Okay, so that's a second, so we'll, we'll take that to the vote then. So we're voting on the, the changes that have been proposed and seconded. You've got your little... Oh, sorry, yep.
I propose an amendment before the other amendment. So I don't, I don't want to point of order you, but normally you resolve the first amendment before, to see whether it becomes a substantive motion or not. So sorry to get all procedural.
No, that's okay.
Okay.
Let it learn.
I, so my amendment was, was to, was to scrap the numbers. The town clerk responded kindly to that, but I don't see that, I don't see the reason as being anything other than our own making. There's, I see no problem at all. If, if one committee wanted all eighteen councillors turn up to it, then I don't think it's right to say no. We are all elected to represent Stapleford. And if we all want to turn up to a, to a committee and exercise our, our right to vote, I don't see why, I don't see why not, I really don't. Unless proportionality was an issue, but it isn't. So why not? I'd like a second though.
I'll second.
We've got a second as well. Okay, and that, so we're voting on Tim's proposal first.
Well, Mr. Mayor, sorry, can I just sort of come back in there, please? It's, it's highly irregular to not have a set number of councillors on a meeting because people need to know who is actually going to that meeting and I've got to be able to call the meeting correctly with the right number of members. If you were going to have everybody come to them, then it might as well be a council meeting because the point of the committees is that we can just do a quick meeting without having to hope that everybody can turn up. Equally, the, the right way to say this really, all councillors can come to meetings, there's no, nothing to stop them from coming if they're interested in a particular thing. The, the problem with having everybody on there means that the quorum goes up, which is likely going to be a problem when we're trying to start to call meetings, which is why you have a smaller number for the committees. Everybody can turn up to the meetings. If they're not on the committee, they can turn up as a member of the public and have the right to speak as a member of the public, the same as anybody else. So I don't see that there's a need for you to suddenly just open up every committee to every single councillor to sit on and vote.
Come back, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, you can come back on that if you want to.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm not proposing that we just, that we just open door and scrap the nominations. What I'm saying is that rather than change the, the standing orders, as it were, for the, for the committee, every time, like in this instance, the proposer, Ella's proposal, well, I believe, correct me if I got that wrong, was to, was to up them for the numbers that we've got today. I'm just saying, well, why don't we just not have the numbers predefined? And that way, every annual council meeting, any councillors that are interested in putting themselves forward for a committee, don't require further amendments to the, to the terms of reference for that committee. They can just accept whoever wants to be on them. It just makes more sense for the long term. That's, that's all. I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying free for all and everything becomes a full council. That's not my, that's not what I'm saying at all.
Councillor Brown to speak next, and then it's councillor Patterson.
Just to ask the town clerk, I'm just trying to remember the figures when we're going through standing orders. A, what makes a meeting quorum? And B, I think it's only those members that are down on any list that can vote, is it? Other councillors can turn up, but they can't vote?
Yes, through the mayor. Yes, it's, only the members that are listed as being members of the committee can actually vote. Sorry, what was the first question?
And also, what makes it quorum?
Right, yes, so what makes it quorum is what the law says. So it's a third of the membership, subject to a minimum of three.
Right, and not including, of course, the town clerk.
Well, I don't vote, I'm just there to help.
The chair of the meeting.
Councillor Patterson?
Yeah, I mean, it's nice if, if all councillors will turn up to all meetings, but as I've sat on a lot of the committees in the last year, over time, people don't turn up, the enthusiasm dwindles and then we find... And then we find it hard to be quorit. So suggesting that it should be opened up to all councillors and we don't put a figure on it leaves us not being able to vote on anything at all and never passing anything or achieving anything.
Okay, thank you for that. Does anyone else want to speak? Or we're going to move, obviously, we've got two proposals here. So which order are we taking these in, please?
Councillor, councillor McCrae, Mr Mayor. I, I don't want to create an issue for the town clerk. She's got a hard enough job. I think that perhaps, given that my amendment is more with a view to the long term, then I'd be happy to withdraw my amendment, deal with the issues of today. But, but take back the review of how we may be able to be more flexible at the annual council meeting to accommodate the desires of that council for that year in the future. So I'm, I'm happy to withdraw my amendment, but I'd like to, I'd like to pursue this avenue of thought on a committee when it comes to reviewing our processes.
Okay, I guess that makes things easier. So thank you for that. So we, so we're now, we're back to the original motion that councillor Kearney put forward, which was to extend the committees to the amount of people that's on them. I think that's worded right. So again, we'll do the votes, we'll start from the top. So is the town clerk ready for these?
Yes.
Okay, so you're either voting for, against or abstaining. And this is the motion that councillor Kearney put forward. So we'll start with councillor Atherton.
Abstain.
Councillor Boffinger, I think I got it right that time.
Four.
Councillor Briggs.
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Brown.
Four.
Councillor Darby.
Four.
Right, councillor Atherton's not here. Councillor Frost.
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Gourd.
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Grindel.
Four.
Councillor Jay Hallam.
Four.
Councillor T Hallam.
Four.
Councillor Hallam Davis.
Four.
Councillor Hawkins.
Four.
Councillor Kearney.
Four.
Councillor McCrae, that's weird, four. Councillor McGrath.
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Needham.
Four.
Thank you. And councillor Patterson.
Four.
That's carried, Mr Mayor.
That's, that's definitely carried that one. Thank you, everybody. So let me get my agenda back up again. We've now moved on to item outside bodies, I think is the next one. Yep, outside bodies.
Mr Mayor, we're on the, still on the appointment of committees. We've actually got item C and item D to appoint the chair and vice chair and then the, to approve the terms of reference for events and heritage.
Sorry about editing yourself there on time.
Yeah, you're very keen.
I'm trying to use the laptop at the same time here. So appointment of committees. So done that bit, okay. Lost it now, hang on a second. Next page. Sorry, sorry about this. I've got a tablet and a laptop on the go at the same time. We lost it altogether now. So what was, sorry about this. What was it that you said councillor Hallam? Because I've lost the page.
Where we are, where we are at the moment is the council to appoint the members are set out in appendix one to the report. Now, that's, that's the, the list of, of all the nominees, including those that have come forward with their nominations today and those that were on previously. So assuming that the council is, is happy with all of that, then I think we, do we, do we have to vote on it as one? Or ask the town clerk on that?
No. I think she's just got back to her seat.
Sorry, I'm whipping between rooms here. What, can you just repeat the question? I'm so sorry.
The question is, do we, do we need to vote on the, on the table of committee nominations as, as amended? To, to ratify them? Or is this just a, essentially a noting report?
Well, because Ella's sort of increased the membership, then it can just be noted that those were all the members that were put forward. So unless anybody wants to object to those, then I suggest we can just take them as read.
Then, does anyone want to object to that? Or are you all happy that we take it as read?
I think that's duly noted, yeah.
Take it as read.
Okay, thank you for that. So then the next bit was, that was the council appoint the chair and vice chair positions to its committee among the approved members, okay.
Mr Mayor, just if it, if it helps, we don't have to do that tonight. They can just be appointed at committee if that makes it easier just to get through this report.
Yeah, I've always thought that's, I've always thought that's what we did anyway. So is everyone happy with that? The, the first meeting of each committee, the chair and vice chair will be chosen by the committee members.
Yeah.
Is that okay with that?
I'd be happy to propose that if you need a proposer. I'll follow the town clerk's advice on the formality.
I'll second that.
Yeah, and where's the town clerk on? Do we need to vote on that? Or are we just taking that that everyone's happy with that one?
If, if you want to, well, you can both, we don't need to do the full sort of register thing. I think everybody's sort of said in agreement that they're, they're happy with that.
Yeah, is anybody against that? Just, just for clarity, is anybody against that or want to abstain? Okay, so then the next one is the, the council approve the terms of reference for the Events, Art and Heritage Committee are set out in appendix two of the report. Does anyone want to speak on that?
Mr Mayor, if it would help if I just introduce the reason for bringing this. Basically, at one of the previous meetings, we moved to put the blue plaque scheme to the Events Committee to look at. And obviously, the, the terms of reference for the Events Committee is, is literally just to look at events. So we do need to expand it to cover other things that it might want to do. And that's the purpose of the, the new terms of reference.
Okay, and, okay, is everyone happy with the terms of reference? And is, is anybody against or want to abstain on that?
Do we need a, a second or a proposer or?
I'll propose we accept them, Chair.
I'll second.
Did you get that?
Working, okay.
Yeah, and does anyone want to abstain or object to that? I will put on that one. Okay, thank you for that. I'll just give the town clerk a minute to catch up and I'll try and find the next page as well.
Right, so the next bit's the appointments to outside bodies, Mr Mayor.
Yep.
And there are some, again, there's some problems here. There's an excess of nominees for the, the Helpful Bureau and the Stapleford Town Deal Executive Board, that we only have one seat that we can, unfortunately, we can't increase these. So these are external bodies, so they only want one of us to, to go. So for the Helpful Bureau, we've got John McGrath and Simon Frost nominated. And for the Town Deal, we've board, we've got councillor Kearney and Tim Hallam nominated.
Okay, so do we, do we need to vote on this then or?
Yeah, is it okay to speak, Mr Mayor?
Yeah, of course, it's councillor Brown.
Yeah, very few numbers and the few, few numbers is more likelihood. I'm sure John's very healthy. But if someone goes off sick or can't attend, then it's good to have a deputy on these things. So is it okay to have the main person and the deputy?
You, you mean, you mean like the original person and then a substitute as well if they can't get it?
Indeed, I mean, all of us, all of us could, could, you know, as we know lately, could be, could become sick at a moment's notice.
No, of course, no, it's a good point.
Recent experience.
Mr Mayor, what does the town clerk have to say on that?
If you want to appoint that way, that's entirely up to council. I'd have to double check that that's okay with the, the committees that we've been asked to go to. I'm not sure if the Town Deal Board will be happy with that. It, it depends on how they're constituted. So I'd have to check.
Okay, so is that, is that something you need to do and come back to us? Do we move this to, or do we need to resolve this now?
Mr Mayor?
Sorry, councillor McGrath.
Richard, right, just a quick, on, on the Helpful Bureau in particular. I mean, I think me and you worked on that a lot as well. I have no problem with, with being a deputy there, because obviously as we're going through what we're going through, I think they need staring and helping anyway. So I have no problem with a double up there. Right, it's pointless going to a vote. It might be eight, eight, nine, nine. It doesn't really bother me. I think we're all here to do what we want to do. On the, on the Town Deal Board, I think we've only got two meetings left now, which are the two meetings, I believe, August and October. So to go to a point of voting over that, it, it seems a bit ridiculous in my eyes. But that's politics. But on another point, no disrespect to Mr councillor Hallam, he's already got a very important job in charge of skills and this, that and the other and J and E and all that. So I would say, and I thank you today, today, Tim, your input was fantastic. But just to change it now with two weeks to go, or two meetings to go, sorry, I think it's a bit untoward.
Yeah, we've got, I didn't see who put the hand up first. I don't know if it was councillor Frost. And then I've got a hand up on a M. Who's M?
Yeah, that's, that's me, Mr Mayor.
Yeah, I've got my hand up as well, Mr Mayor.
If councillor Kearney wants to go first, then councillor Patterson and then councillor Frost, if that's okay with you three. Bob's just got his hand up because he's waving at me.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I've got to say, I'm a little bit baffled by the, the nomination for councillor Hallam. I've been on this board from the start. I've been involved on subcommittees with the branding team. I've been on subcommittees with the architects. And I've been on the subcommittee for actually selecting the companies, the, the outside bodies that we use to assist us on this. I knew this project inside out and actually, I cannot for the life of me fathom why anybody would think it was sensible at this point to swap me out for somebody else. Secondly, once again, there are very few women on this board. And women's voices yet again are being completely disregarded. There is, there are, there is me, there is Jess from Broxton Women's Project. And there is Louise Lydia from Harley Rogers Solicitors. They're the only three women on it. The rest, the rest are men. So it, it, you know, for a question of diversity, I think, I think that's important. And thirdly, I would question whether actually it, it, it's sensible to have the Chair of Jobs and Economy at the Borough as the town, as the, as the town council representative. To me, the, the Jobs and Economy is the central committee to this. And it, to me, would seem a conflict of interest. I'm not convinced that necessarily somebody who's the Chair of Jobs and Economy at the Borough Council can represent the town council completely unfettered when, when they have Borough Council interests to advocate for as well.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Patterson.
Yeah, and first of all, on, oh gosh, the Helpful Bureau. At the moment, I would, I think the more people that actually put input would be better for their Helpful Bureau at the moment. It might be worth a discussion with them to see whether they would accept the two members. Because I know the position at some point, they would like to turn into being a trustee as well. So if they would open the door to two members, you know, that, that's maybe two trustees that could eventually come. So I'm in favour of asking them if they would accept two members. On the Towns Deal, I think I've got to echo what Ella's already said, really. I, I think it is a conflict to have somebody from the Borough. I think we need somebody that's independent from the Borough sitting on, on, on this committee. And like she said, she's been there from the beginning to put somebody in different now, trying to play catch up with everything she's done. I think it's detrimental to it, really. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Patterson. Councillor Frost?
Yeah, I'd like to echo part of what Sue said regarding the Helpful Bureau. The more we can get in, the better. I would welcome John's help. I really would. That would be fantastic. Because I think with two parties representing ourselves and whatever it shows that are working across the board on this, that we're working together, we are there to help them. And I think that would be a brilliant idea.
Okay, that, that's appreciated. So thank you, everybody, for that. So is this something we need to, where's the town clerk then? I'm just, I'm looking for him there. Is this something I think we need to vote on this one then, don't we?
Mr Mayor, can I, can I say a few words before we go to the votes that I haven't been invited to so far?
Yeah, you can come back.
Thank you. No, I haven't spoken on this at all yet.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, I've been, I've been attacked left, right and centre, but, but I haven't actually expressed my opinion. So slightly preemptive there. When the, when the committee nominations opened, this was, this was blind. So I went out to, to all of the group leaders and it said, here are all of the activities, the, all of the committees, all of the outside bodies. So on behalf of the Lib Dem group, we had a meeting about it. And I was seen as the most logical person to run point for Stapleford Town Council on that board and the other way around as well. And I, I must say that I would like to see a greater involvement of this town council on that board. There have been many, many meetings and we haven't had a conversation as a town council about it at all. This is £25 million to Stapleford. This is once in a generation, if not once in more than one generation opportunity for the town. And, and I find it a crying shame that, that, that you councillors have not been involved in it. I have had an involvement with it at arm's length. As rightly pointed out, I'm Chair of Jobs and the Economy on Broxton. Firstly, in my defence, that means I don't need to catch up. Right? So, so a change wouldn't be a derailing, because I, because I'm already clued in on what's going on. But secondly, I feel that the, that this council and many members on the group that I represent as, as leader, feel that, that the representation from the Towns Deal to the council and from the council to the Towns Deal hasn't been good. I am willing to withdraw my own nomination. I say, thank you, Lib Dem group, I will not accept the nomination to be a member to be the, the town council's nominated representative on that board. I was the person who asked councillor Kearney to be the town council representative in the first place, because I had a controlling measure in the shape of that, of, of that board as it was being formed. And I said, and I, and I said, and councillor Kearney will back me up on this, I'm sure. I phoned her up and I said, Ella, you are the right person for the job. So, so I'm happy to withdraw. But what I would ask councillor Kearney to do is actually let this town council be involved. It's not a seat for an individual councillor. It's a seat that, that is representing this council on that board. This council that represents Stapleford, that board being the best opportunity for improvement that Stapleford's ever had. Thank you.
I appreciate that. So we'll, thank you.
Mr Mayor, I've got one very quick thing to say on that, if that's okay. I think firstly, it's, it's very unfair to suggest that I haven't included councillors in that. This, this board started, my first meeting on that board was in February. And the reason that my first meeting on that board was not in January was because basically, there was a, there was an argument somewhere else about who should or shouldn't be on it. And I was not nominated in time to be on there for January. So my first meeting was in February. We then didn't have a town council, this is the first full town council meeting we've had. At what point would you like me to update? Yes, maybe I've neglected to send emails. That's absolutely fine. Any councillor is welcome to come and observe an executive board meeting. Any councillors welcome to be involved in the stakeholder group. And actually, I would say that there have been councillors that have been involved in the stakeholder group. And actually, I would say that there have been councillors that have been involved in the stakeholder group and there have been councillors that have observed the executive board. So I think it's entirely unreasonable to pin it on me if councillors have decided that they don't want to engage with that process. Thank you very much.
Chair, Mr. Mayor.
It's like councillor McGrath.
It is mate, yeah. Right, well, first of all, David's been involved from the start. I, I think we decided in most of the meetings, it was cross party without a doubt. And I think Sue represented, Sue represented Ella, the first meeting. Councillor Jackson, Richard, right, represented the Conservatives. There was an argument about what we've been going on about now, which is gender. What's it called, gender things that you all go on about? I know what it is, women, more women on the board, right? And eventually Ella ended up representing the town council. And I think between us all, what we do forget here, without bringing this into another bit of a argument or discussion, right, is the way we've gone forward on this is absolutely tremendous, right? And like I said earlier, I thanked Tim for his input today, basically around skills and everything else that we've been on about. But a number of councillors, that have been councillors for years, have been on about this for years. We've finally got an opportunity now with a couple of meetings to go, right, to make sure we get a proper thing that all of us are represented for, to get the best deal for Stapleford. So I believe that we should remain as we are, that's me personally, right? And it took me a bit of oohing and aahing trying to get on the committee, right? Because my passion, passion has always been Stapleford, right, without a doubt. The stakeholders have also, I think councillor Needham and other people have been holding the stakeholders, that have also had a tremendous input into what is going into the final plan. So I think we need to just, you know, think what we want to do and I think we're, we're going forward now. There's been some things, decisions made today, which hopefully will come from as well and move on. So I think this is probably the wrong time to start deciding who goes on what. Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, sorry, hang on, I can see a few hands up, but it looks like it's councillor Patterson next and then it will be councillor Grindle. Can I just ask everybody to turn their hands off? Because there's a few up and if you're not using them, it's getting a bit confusing. So it's councillor Patterson, councillor Grindle and then it will be councillor Frost, he's got his hand up. And then if everyone else, Bob, your hand's still up mate.
Ah, I can't find my hand to turn it off, I'll look that in a minute.
Thank you.
Yeah, nobody was attacking you, Tim. I think people were just trying to point out, you know, changing somebody over at this late stage, it's, it's a bit daft. And, oh gosh, and to say that councillors haven't been involved before the lockdown. I know that Pip, Si, Theresa, I can't remember whether Dave Grindle was there, but we attended the stakeholders meetings, oh, and you know, there were quite a few of us there and putting our input into it, to say that we weren't bothered, I find quite offensive. We were all very interested and wanted to engage and we would have come to, to the meetings down there to meet the public and speak to them about their ideas. So I do find that a bit upsetting to say we haven't been engaged because we have. You know, we had a really good discussion down there. I know Si, Pip, and I can't remember who was around that table, but there were quite a few of us there. So I just wanted to point that out.
I appreciate that, councillor Patterson, thank you. It's councillor Grindle next and then it's councillor Frost.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Firstly, I would say that what Ella was saying earlier, I can understand. Yes, it has been difficult. Unfortunately, she couldn't make the first one, I think Sue did. Ella has always been at the meetings since. Secondly, John, councillor McGrath, he's, he's said a lot of sense, he makes a lot of sense. He's been very clear. One of the things that I've come across is that the people of Stapleford actually are very interested and, and have had a lot of feedback. So that's a very good sign for the town and the people of the town. It is, it is what it is as far as rules and regulations were laid down, which Ella and John and Tim probably have seen, that there had to be certain people on, certain, from certain areas and certain places. So it, it, nobody was happy with this in the beginning. And I'm sure John and Ella and Tim weren't. So I would say that, yeah, there's only a couple of meetings left, but the, the point is, I don't see any point in trying to change things now as Tim has, has decided not to continue. But I will say that Tim was here today and I got, and as I represented the Borough on the board, I actually asked if I could have a sub and I was given Tim and Tim was notified by, by leaders at Brockstow. I shall be back in my place next week. The simple reason is I've been waiting. I wasn't even gonna throw that away to wait another 11 months. So that's the reason why Tim was here today. Thank you.
Thank you. So that, that looks like then we don't have to actually go to the vote for that one. So, so Tim, Tim's stepped back on that one. So it's councillor Kearney is staying on for the town deal. We've got, is it, we've got two people for the helpful bureau, but obviously they're, they're going to be spoken to, aren't they? To check that's okay, if I've got that right. We've got, we've got, we've got a councillor for digging. The piece of paper I'm looking at, it says the women's project, there's no one on that unless the town clerk's got an update on that.
No, that's a gap that we need to fill. Or we don't, we don't have to send anybody if we don't want to, but if somebody's interested, then they can put themselves forward.
Okay. Does anyone, does anyone have to put themselves forward to the women's project?
Can I speak, Mr. Mayor?
You certainly can, councillor Patterson, thank you.
Rather than leaving the place unfilled, if, if nobody else is going to go for it, then I'll put myself forward, you know, I'd rather try and represent them as a town council than not.
That's a fair point and thank you, that's, I'm, I'm sure that's appreciated and is everyone happy with that? I know I certainly am.
I'll second that nomination, Mr. Mayor.
That's appreciated, thank you. Is everybody okay with that? Is anybody against?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, actually, nothing wrong with whoever goes on it. Obviously, it's best for a woman to go on it, but I was thinking that maybe councillor Gould might be interested.
I would be quite happy.
Okay, so we've got, we've got two nominations for women's project then, so how do we work this one then? Where's the town clerk gone?
I'll be happy to second councillor Gould because I know that she's done a very good job with Brockstow Women's Project before.
Yeah, I'm happy either way. I just think we should represent, as a town council, we should be representing them, you know.
Would that be, would that be worth then if, if you two, one of you wants to be like the representative and the other one the substitute? Would that work? I'm sure they'd be happy with that, two's better than one, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm happy, I'm happy for that, either way.
Mr. Mayor.
So, sorry, hang on, councillor Gould, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I, I have no objections to that.
Okay, so are we all happy with that then, with, with the two of you on the women's project? And I'm sure you can sort it between yourselves, can't you? One is the rep and the substitute or take it in turns, whatever, and, and I'm sure they'll appreciate both of your input. So thank you for that. Does that fill all the space then?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Right, we're getting there, let's get back to the agenda. Where's that gone? So now.
Oh, yeah.
We're now on item. Okay, we're now on item eight, to note the appointment of group leaders. So if.
Nothing.
That's a bit wrong, so if, if group leaders would like to announce who, who they are.
No change for the Labour Group. It's still no.
Can you, can we just announce who it is just so for people watching and also for the town clerk to write it down, please?
Sorry, Labour Group councillor Kearney.
Councillor Tim Hallam, the leader of the Liberal Democrat and Independent Group.
Councillor John Gould for the Conservatives.
Thank you, as, as the, as the town clerk noted all that.
Councillor Theresa Needham.
Sorry, sorry.
For the, the green.
Oh, green, aren't they?
Green group.
Green group.
We can't forget the, our greens.
Mustn't forget the greens.
Right, that, that's appreciated, thank you. Has the town clerk got all of that?
I have, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so back to the agenda, we're on item nine, which is the appointment of the leader of the council. All right, and I think I'm doing it in the right order. It's a notice of motion for the abolition of the posts of leader and deputy leader of Stapleford Town Council.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, okay.
Under item, item nineteen in standing orders, the, I think subject matter, I believe, comes under the purview of a committee of the council. If we're talking about a change to, change to our standing orders and, and how it refers to all the removal of the, the mayor, sorry, the, the leader and the deputy leader, then I think that that, I'll accept the town clerk's advice on this, just to check I've got my committees right, but I think it comes under finance and general purposes, which has in its terms of reference, changes to standing orders. And now under item nineteen, if the subject matter of a motion comes within the province, within the province of a committee of the council, it shall upon being moved and seconded be referred without discussion to such committee as the council may determine for report, provided that yourself, Mr. Mayor, considers it not to be, considers it to be not a matter of urgency. If it is a matter of urgency, obviously we can discuss it now. I would say that this isn't a matter of urgency. Therefore, I think it's better served at a committee to discuss it properly. And I think there's a value, incidentally, in having a proper conversation about this.
Is the town clerk okay with that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to sort of, I'm trying to sort of unravel what, what's just been said there. The, under the order of business for the annual meeting, we've just done part one of G, which is to note the appointment by each group of its leader. And then it goes on to say the majority group leader will become the leader of the council unless otherwise decided. So council has the opportunity here to choose to do it differently if they wish. And I believe that's why the motion's been put forward as, as part of that decision making. If there's changes subsequent that need to be done to the standing orders, which I believe there are because there's reference to the leader doing things like planning committee, planning applications in the absence of a committee, where there's an urgent matter to be dealt with, then yes, that would need to go to a committee if you wanted to. But it would standard adjourned in any event to the next council meeting for any changes to standing orders.
Okay, so as it, as it's, sorry, go on.
No, it's, sorry to, sorry to interrupt, but you as the chair of the meeting had already moved on to item nine. Item eight is the appointment of the group leaders. And, and according to standing orders, the majority group leader is the, that is, that wasn't, that is a noting report. Item eight, it has been noted and according to standing orders, the majority group leader becomes the leader of the council. That nobody objected.
Unless otherwise.
Sorry, that's my, that's my mistake for missing this out because the agenda I'm looking at to note the appointment to Green, although he didn't say the other bit, so we do, we do need to do that bit, don't we?
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry, that, that was my fault because I, on the agenda I've got here, it just says to note the appointment of group leaders. He didn't say the other bit underneath it. Then item nine was the bit I'd moved on to, wasn't it? So it wasn't written under eight, so yeah, we do need to sort that bit out, don't we? So just waiting for the town clerk, it's quite difficult when you're in separate rooms.
Yeah, it is, I'm sorry. So items eight and nine, it's separated out just to make it clear for people to know what we're doing. So the first part of G is to, in the standing orders, is to appoint the group, sorry, to note the appointment of each group of its leader. The next part of that then is to decide who the leader of the town council is going to be, if it's, if council doesn't want it to be the majority group leader, or they might, I don't know, whatever is going to happen there. But to do it all in under one item, I feel would be confusing, which is why I've separated it out. And then noting that we'd had a motion as well, which would seek to be an alternative decision to the majority group leader becoming the leader. So it's, it is legitimate to do it that way and it's, it's up to council how it wants to proceed.
Okay, so I think then if we, if people can tell us, the, the, obviously we've just done the group leaders and then, so the, the group leader, the majority is councillor Tim Hallam. So unless, unless there's any objections or, or as otherwise as it says in standing orders, then, then Tim would become the leader of the council for the moment. Does, does anyone have any objections or the otherwise bit?
Councillor McRae.
Councillor Gould, yes.
Could you just repeat that, I'm so sorry, but I was interrupted and I missed what you were saying, so. I'm sorry, would you mind repeating it? So I know just exactly what's.
Okay, so we've, we've noted the appointment of group leaders and as, as the standing order says, the, the majority group, the leader of that becomes the leader of council unless chosen otherwise. So what we're saying is unless chosen otherwise, then councillor Tim Hallam would become the leader of the council. And that, that's where we've got to.
Well, in that, in that case, I'd like to nominate councillor Theresa Needham for the position of leader of the council. Because if we've got to have one, I'd prefer one that was sensible.
And I'll second that.
Okay, can, can we just keep personal opinions to ourselves though? That's not what we're here for.
Absolutely, I think that should be extended to councillor Hallam and his comments before or during the mayoral election.
No, definitely, it's, it's definitely to everybody, that includes me and all of us, we're all here to, to, you know. So that's going to go to the vote then. So we've got one nomination for councillor Hallam as leader of the council for the Lib Dems and then we've got one nomination, oh, sorry, has anyone seconded the nomination for Tim?
I'm seconding nomination for Tim.
Okay, and does anyone want to second the nomination for Theresa?
I already did.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I wasn't sure, Mr. Mayor, whether, whether anybody actually proposed me, because it's nice to be seconded, but, but I don't know about the proposal.
Okay, did anybody propose Tim?
I proposed Tim.
Yeah, not proposed to him, proposed Tim, okay. All right then.
I'm already married.
Is the town clerk ready for the vote on this one? So again, we'll, we'll start with nominations for councillor Tim Hallam and it's either for, against or abstaining.
Chair.
Is the town clerk ready for the vote on that? Oh, sorry, just a bit out.
Mr. Mayor, well surely Flower, as I'll say, surely we're both allowed to speak on both representative for Tim and representative for Theresa, aren't we?
Of course.
Yeah, to say why, yeah, so we must be able to say something.
Sorry, you're, you're completely right councillor McGrath. Did the person that proposed councillor Tim Hallam want to speak on that?
Yes, I would. Tim himself has proved himself fairly good at speaking with the public and also people speaking on behalf of other bodies. If you look at his work in the Borough and also on council. I think he would put the council forward and foremost in everything he does and I think it's something we've got to look forward to. Now, it's something I believe that should go to vote. So to have somebody outstanding against him gives him a fair chance. So as I say, I think Tim will do very well, but it's over to you guys.
Okay, that's appreciated and would anybody like to speak on behalf of councillor?
I, I would like to speak on behalf of councillor Needham, please, seeing as I proposed her. Over, over the last.
I get the chance afterwards, please.
Over, over the last, well, more than a year now, Theresa has been my deputy. She has been an absolute rock in this role to me. Theresa is, she is fair handed, she has a, has a, has a fair mind, everything that she does. She considers everybody and everyone in Stapleford, every councillor. She is truly, I think, the best person to be leader if we need to have one. Her knowledge on just about everything surpasses, you know, anybody on the council, as far as I, you know. Whenever I'm in a quandary, I've called Theresa and sought advice. And she has always had a good answer for me. She's always helped me and steered me on a path, you know, in terms of, you know, everything I could have needed in a deputy. And I actually think she will make a better leader than I did. She's absolutely fantastic. She will be fair. She will listen to everybody on this council. And she will have the whole of Stapleford at the heart of everything she does.
That's appreciated. And thank you very much, councillor Patterson.
Yeah, I mean, I echo everything Ella said. But I would also like to add that I think Theresa's been a very undervalued member of our council. Quite often, she sits in the background doing lots and lots of work that we all benefit from and never gets the recognition of. And I think she is level-headed. And I actually think it would be better to have a leader of the town council that is not actually on the borough. Again, there's a bit of a conflict there, because, you know, sometimes we're not always going to agree with the borough on certain things. So I think having that neutral voice as a leader, you know, where she has only shot the best impact of Stapleford at heart would be the better option. And thank you.
That's appreciated. And just to keep things fair, does the person that seconded Tim want to speak as well?
Chair, just on councillor Needham as well, as, well, I mean, I've known Theresa for a bit, but all about. And the best thing is, regardless of politics, Theresa is neutral. So that's the biggest thing that you need. When you're running a town council or leader of a town council, I've never wanted politics involved in the town council, because that's where it becomes too political, right? You want someone who's neutral. I know she's green, or, and even I'm turning a bit green now, but you've got to have someone who's neutral, who takes opinions in from everyone else, and then decides what she believes. Because as a leader, you've got to believe it. I mean, Ella, as I'd say, is a bit fiery, but that might be the nature, similar to mine. But you've got to have someone who's neutral, that can control us all as a unit that were voted by all the people in Stapleford. Remember, the people voted us in. No one else, regardless of your Lib Dem, Conservative, Green, or whatever, we were voted in by the people of Stapleford. At town council level, it's because of what they know us, right? Votes can go here, there, and everywhere. But at the end of the day, you need someone neutral that can move this town council to where it should be, right? To lead the people of Stapleford into a new phase, who has been at 25 years' plan and all that, 25 million. I believe Theresa is the best. No disrespect to Tim. He's a bright lad, or a bright kid, as I'd say, because I'm younger than him, or older. But we need someone who's got the ability to move us on.
Okay. And would the person that seconded Tim like to speak? And then we'll move on to the vote.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, first of all, Tim has actually shown you already that he's read the codes of practice and everything else. He knows what he's speaking about. He's a very intelligent guy. He's going to go a long way in this world in his lifetime. And I think he's already shown that he can do the job. Thanks, Chair.
Okay, that's appreciated. So that's every, that's the people that's proposing, seconded, spoke. So we'll move to the vote now. So is the town clerk ready for that?
I am, yes, Mr Mayor.
Okay, so.
So what are we voting?
We're voting.
Mr Mayor, is there any chance, is there any chance that the potential leaders could express, I think it might be important to express why, you know, why, what they would do in the role? It's lovely to hear nice things saying about us. And I'll echo all, each and every one of the nice things that's said about Theresa. I will, genuinely. But I think it's only fair to ask the potential leaders why they are willing to step up to that role.
No, I think that is fair, especially because we did that for the mayor thing earlier. So we'll start with Theresa. And then we'll come back to Tim, if that's okay. So Theresa, would you like to speak first?
Yeah. Well, I mean, firstly, I'd like to thank people for saying nice things about me. I think each and every one of you knows that at some point, I've probably worked with you in a small group or as an individual. And I think what I get a real sense of is the direction of travel that most people want to go in. I know that there's a great sense of wanting to improve our town centre. That keeps coming up again and again, whether it through the town centre deal, or through the neighbourhood plan, or through any other mechanisms that we've got within the town council. I can see that sort of thing coming forward. I am green. And I think that is a big thing that I think reunites us all. I think we see that as the big challenge for making our community sustainable. And when I talk about sustainability, I don't just mean like the green environmental issues. I'm talking about sustainability as the ability to endure. And Stapleford at the moment needs that. It needs the endurance, the testing times that we've just been through and what is coming ahead. And I can see that we've all got motivation for doing that. So what I'd like to bring to us as leader is a direction for our voices in sustainability and uniting together to do this sort of thing. And actually, enabling you as councillors to fulfil your election promises. Because I know the kind of things that you all wanted to achieve. And they don't actually negate each other. They can all be achieved. You can do that together. So that is what I'm hoping to bring, that we're not in conflict with each other, that we work together to achieve what you want to achieve as councillors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hallam, Tim Hallam.
Thanks very much. The the position of leader isn't the boss of Stapleford. I think this is something that Theresa and I would share as a direction. We're both very, I'm going to use the word liberal people, but with a small L in Theresa's case and a big L in mine. You know, definitely about enabling people and getting the best. So to, for what I say is, I know each and every one of you, some better than others, but I do. And I know the value that each and every one of you as councillors has to give. I am also, thank you for pointing it out, Maggie, politically pretty neutral, quite centrist, pretty moderate, and generally supportive of localism and democracy. Councillor Gould, you're being very rude, shaking your head like that, but if it makes you happy. The, so what I bring that Theresa doesn't, and I would be delighted with Theresa as a leader, by the way, also, I think that she is spectacular. What I bring that Theresa doesn't is the connection beyond this town council. This is an absolutely pivotal time for Stapleford. We've got HS2 that is happening right now. And we're either going to be, we're either going to be able to make the most of it and maximise that potential, or we're going to get swept under the tracks as they're laid. And the significance that we have in that development, as well as the strategic development in Toten, the Midlands Engine, the Toten Delivery Board, the representation with the local enterprise partnership, the ability to get funding for our town, and all of these things, I've had to learn how to do in the last year. And I'm not half bad at it, actually. So I'm very proud of the work that I'm doing on the Borough Council on behalf of Stapleford already. The thing is, that the town council isn't massively linked in with these projects. And I think that's a crying shame. There are 18 people of an amazing, with an amazing variety and depth of skills, that is currently not considered seriously enough by the big players. And I mean, the developers and the national bodies, the national mechanisms that are moving, whether we want them to or not. And the reason for that is, I've learnt this from experienced councillors on the borough, like councillor Radulovich. If you're not invited to the table, then you don't get a say until public consultation. If you don't, if you only speak up at public consultation, you're probably too late to make the key decisions. Now, that, being able to harness the connections that I have through the borough and bring the town along as well, is, puts Stapleford Town Council, all of you, right in the middle of everything that's going on. Now, at the town deal board earlier.
Sorry, to interrupt councillor Hallam, but point of order, Chair, how long is this going to go on for? Because councillor Needham certainly didn't speak for this long.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate that. Can you summarize and finish up?
I'll close quickly. At the town deal board earlier, one of the consultants put up the statement that Stapleford is going to be the small town, that's the most well-connected small town in the UK. I would go one further than that. Stapleford is going to be better connected than a lot of cities in the UK. We can be in the driving seat, or we can be struggling to catch up. And I will put us in that driving seat.
Okay, thank you for that. So we'll now move on to the vote. So we'll start with councillor.
Chair.
Sorry, yeah.
Richard, is there anyone else that wants to speak before we go to the vote? Because surely there must be, as we were. There must be some other ones that want to speak.
We've had everybody who proposed to people and the seconded and spoke. And then we've done their speeches. So now we're just going to move to the vote. So is the town clerk ready? I can't steer it there. Yeah, I can now. See you looking around. Okay, so we'll start with, let me just write this down. We'll start with councillor Needham to start with. And then you either voted for, against, or you abstained then. So, and this is for councillor Needham to, for the leader of the council. So we'll start with councillor Atherton.
For.
Councillor Bothinger.
For.
Councillor Briggs.
For.
Councillor Brown.
Sorry, Theresa, you're Dan Brick, but against, sorry.
Councillor Darby.
For.
Councillor Eptin's not here. Councillor Frost.
Sorry, Theresa, against.
Councillor Gould.
For.
Councillor Grindle.
My apologies, Theresa, against.
Councillor Jay Hallam.
Against.
Councillor Tim Hallam.
Sorry, Theresa, I've got to have to vote for me, against.
Councillor Hallam Davis.
Against.
Councillor Hawkins.
It's so difficult, I'm abstaining.
Okay. Councillor Kearney.
Sorry, for Theresa Needham.
Thank you. Councillor McRae, oh, that's me, against. Councillor McGrath.
For.
Councillor Needham.
I guess, sorry, Tim, it's going to have to vote for me, for.
Thank you. And councillor Patterson.
For Theresa.
And just as previous votes, if you can just give the town clerk and myself a few seconds just to top this up. So we've got nine for, seven against, and one abstention. So then the next vote is you're voting for councillor Tim Hallam for leader of Stapleford Town Council. So we'll start with councillor Atherton.
Against.
Councillor Bothinger.
Against.
Councillor Briggs.
John, you're on mute, if you could turn.
Oh, sorry, yours is on mute, John, if you want.
You're on mute.
Turn your mic on.
You're on mute, John.
That's it, you're there. So councillor Briggs.
Can't do it.
Yes, yes, we can hear you now.
Councillor Briggs, against. And I'm against.
No, I ain't got there yet.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. Councillor Darby.
Against.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I've missed one out here. So councillor Brown.
For.
Councillor Frost.
For.
Councillor Gould. Yeah, you might, you can hear you now, you might, so.
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Grindle.
For.
Councillor Jay Hallam.
For.
Councillor T Hallam. Councillor Hallam Davis.
For.
Councillor Hawkins.
Abstaining, go please.
Councillor Kearney.
Against.
Councillor McRae, oh, that's me, that's four. Councillor McGrath.
Against.
Councillor Needham.
Against, sorry, Tim.
Councillor Patterson.
Against.
Thank you. So just, again, just give us a second or two, and then we can just double check this. Okay, so that was again, that was seven for, nine against, and one abstention. So the leadership of the town council goes to councillor. Why do I keep missing your name on here? Sorry. Councillor Hallam, not Hallam, is it?
No.
Congratulations, councillor Needham.
Councillor Needham, sorry.
Thanks. Am I allowed to say something?
Yeah, of course you can.
Okay, I'd like to thank everybody. I hope that whatever's happened tonight, that it doesn't cause fractions between us, because I think we now need to move on. And I'd like to thank Tim for being a worthy opponent in this. And obviously, if it had gone the other way, I'm sure he would be an excellent leader. Okay, thank you.
Theresa. Well done, though.
Excuse me, Mr Mayor, can I just jump in for a second?
Who's, I can hear someone speak.
It's Jess, councillor Jess.
Oh, sorry, yeah, yeah, sorry. I couldn't see a hand or anybody, okay?
No, I'm just sorry to say, I'm going to have to duck out now, because I do have to get to work.
Okay, no, that's appreciated. And can the town clerk note that it's 21:08?
Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. That's appreciated. Thank you. So, right, so we've done that bit. So if I'm right in this, the town clerk, we're on to item nine now, aren't we?
You can look at nine A, basically.
Oh, sorry, yeah, nine A. And we're going back to that thing that was read out earlier in the item nineteen. So this item is going to be moved to the, is it Finance and General Purpose Committee?
Yes, if Tim wants to move that, then that's, yeah.
Did you want to move that, Tim?
Yeah, I want to, I want to move that. Yeah, thanks for it, Mr Mayor.
Okay, so that's done. That's moved to that meeting. So next item on the agenda is.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, are we voting on that?
No, because it's not a vote on that one, I think. Because it says in standing orders, it's. it's been moved and it's been seconded, and it says can be referred without discussion to the committee that it goes to. So it's going to be moved to the Fin, I think it's...
We still need to have a vote on it though, I'm not asking for a discussion.
No, we don't have to have a vote on that, no. Okay, so the next...
Fair enough.
The next item on the...
Sabrina, to confirm that please.
Yeah, yeah, of course we can.
Yeah, this is what Tim was referring to earlier, which is the Standing Order 19, which if the motion becomes in the province of a committee of the council, it shall, upon being moved a second, it be referred without discussion to such committees the council may determine for report, provided that the town mayor, if they consider it to be a matter of urgency, may allow it to be dealt with at the meeting at which it was moved. So is it urgent or is it not, is up to the town mayor.
Yeah. I think that does need more discussion, so it would be appropriate to move it to the Finance and General Purpose Committee. So thank you.
Okay, thanks for clarifying, Sabrina, and thank you, Richard.
Thank you, thank you very much. So the next item on the agenda is the town clerk, what's up?
Yes, I'm with you.
Okay, so item 10, to approve and sign the minutes of the following meetings as correct record. So A, you've all been sent copies of the minutes of the meeting, which is the 5th of June 2020, and then the extraordinary meeting we had on the 3rd of July 2020. So if we start with the 5th of June, is everybody happy with those? Does someone want to propose and second those minutes?
I'm happy to propose that the minutes are correct.
I'll second them.
Okay, and has any objections to the minutes? No, okay. And then the minutes for the 3rd of July 2020, does anyone want to propose those?
I propose those.
And anyone to second those?
I'll second.
Okay, any objections or alterations or anything? Everyone okay with that? Okay, can we move on?
I'm really sorry, Mr Mayor, to keep coming back with tight orders. I'm just thinking, we appointed a leader, but we've not appointed a deputy. Should we do that?
I think it would be good if we did, wouldn't it?
I know, it was a bit of a confusing...
It's okay, we'll get there at the end, won't we? Okay, so where's the town clerk gone? Do we need to jump back to that then? Sorry about this, everybody.
Okay.
She's gone. Do we need to, is the town clerk there? I can't...
Sorry, what was I asking?
It's councillor Kearney's just pointed out, we haven't checked as a deputy leader.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda, but if you wanted to, I could argue that it could come under that.
Okay, does everyone want to do that, or are we all as it is, or?
If everybody's happy.
You're all happy, we just have a leader of the council then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that means you can't have a day off. Okay. So that's item 10. So we now move to item 11, which is Report of Leader of the Council, May 2019 to July 2020, obviously the previous leader. So you've all got a report there. I hope you've all had time to read it. Does the former leader want to read anything out, or are you okay that everyone's like to just read?
I'm very sorry, I was just talking for about 30 seconds on mute to do apologise. We'll get there with these Microsoft Teams shortly, won't we? I'm sure by the time, we don't have to do them anymore. Yeah, I mean, it's obviously, it's a very long report, because it's a summary of the year. If people want me to read it out, I'm happy to. If they don't, I'm also happy. But really, I just, I wanted to add, sort of to just echo what obviously the new leader of the council has said, in that we do really need to just come together now and work together. I really, really genuinely mean with all of my heart, everything I've put in that motion, that I don't feel there's a need for politics at this level getting in the way of the things that... We've all got a common aim. Our common aim is the betterment of the lives of the people of Stapleford. And I feel that there have been, you know, political differences that have got in the way over the last year that shouldn't have done. And I really hope we can all sort of come past that now under Theresa. Theresa, I mean, I appreciate that sometimes, you know, I might have been a little bit divisive, I might not have been particularly, you know, friendly all of the time. I've done my best. I feel the same way about other people. I don't have any interest in being leader, or, you know, and I just want us to get on and do some good stuff for Stapleford. And that's really all I wanted to add to what I've already written, so thank you very much.
Can I also say thank you for your report? I appreciated reading it, and I'm sure others did as well. Can we also thank councillor Kearney for her past year as leader of the council? Because it's got to be...
Chair!
Councillor McGrath, and then I think councillor Patterson had a hand up.
I'd just like to say thank you to Ella, and in a funny fashion, she probably has brought us all together, because that's what we're all here for. To represent the people of Stapleford. As I said earlier, right, we've now got a neutral, green. Right, so hopefully, I'm sure Theresa will bring us all together more. And that includes the leaders of the parties at the Borough, and also at the council. And I wish you the best. Wish you a nice career of it.
That's appreciated, thank you. That's why my camera's not on, because my ears are right, Matt. Councillor Patterson.
Yeah, I think you already covered it, Mr Mayor. I was going to thank Ella. I mean, the work she's put in on her own time, and discovered some of the failings of, you know, I don't want to go into all that, but the failings that were there that have now been corrected. I think we have got a real opportunity to move forward and do some really good stuff in Stapleford. I think that's what we're here for. I know that's what I wanted to do. I don't want to sit round that council table arguing for the sake of arguing when there's so much good that we could be doing. So thank you Ella, look forward to working with you Theresa, and well done. Thank you, thanks, Miss Mayor.
Thank you. Theresa, did you want to speak? It looks like you did.
Yes, please. Sorry, I'm still in a bit of a state of the shock, as you can probably imagine. I just wanted to say also thank you to Ella, because she has done so much of the groundwork, which is going to give me the platform just to continue. I couldn't have done that without her, you know, putting in that work early on. So hopefully, it isn't a complete goodbye from Ella. She will still probably hopefully be having input, if she can stand it. And hopefully, we'll just continue this on together. So massive thank you to Ella for all the work that you've done.
Yeah, that's appreciated by everyone, thank you. So if we move on...
Thank you everybody. I will be here for any councillor that wants any advice or help from me with anything.
Now, that's appreciated. Councillor Gould, did you want to speak?
Yes, please, thank you. I think this evening's decision for leader was the right decision. I think Theresa is going to be excellent. However, the lady that's been leading us for the past year has also been excellent. She has turned a council that was not fit for purpose into a council that is really on its way up. And I think if we all start to work together, as she suggests, we will do very well. But thank you Ella, from the bottom of my heart, you've been tremendous. And it's not like me to say that about a member of the opposition, but it's true. And you have been brilliant. You're intelligent, fair, and you've just been incredible. And your leader Theresa, you have some big footsteps to fill, but I'm sure you will do it. I'm delighted.
I'm only a size five, Theresa, don't worry, but thank you, John.
No, that's appreciated, everybody, so thank you for that. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is, we did the second lot of minutes, right? Annual report of the leader, thank you for that.
Tim had got his hand up.
Oh, okay, does that many hands keep popping up? Can you put the hands down again once you've done it? And then, sorry, councillor Tim Hallam.
That's all right, it's difficult to tell, isn't it? Because you can't tell whether people have clicked them recently or ages ago. No, Theresa, well, through you, Mr Mayor, sorry, I'll try to follow procedure, but Theresa, really, congratulations. If not me, then you, and I think you'll make an absolutely excellent leader, and I'd be very happy to work with you. You know what my expertise are, you know the connections I've got on the Borough and wider, and I offer them for the benefit of the council through your leadership.
Okay, thank you, everybody. And there's still some hands up, if you want to click on them again, they'll go down. Right, so now the next one is annual report of the town council. Again, I'm sure you've all received a copy of that in your agenda packs. I hope you've all read it. I'm sure we're not going to sit here and read all the way through it. There's a little bit at the beginning of that from the mayor, sorry, from the previous mayor, that's going to be someone getting used to, Ray's always the mayor. I don't know if it would be right if we, I think it would, if we let Ray read that bit out if he so wanted to, or is everyone happy to just take it as read?
Mr Mayor, I think it'd be nice for Ray to read it, yes? If he wishes?
Yeah, I think so. That's if he wants to, I don't want to put him on the spot, that's if he wants to. You can tell me now if you want. It's okay. Okay? Yeah, yeah, go for it, mate.
Right, it's been a honour and a privilege to be elected as the town mayor for a third time in the many years of my service on the town council. This year has been filled with activity that will be remembered for the sting in its tail, the coronavirus epidemic. I am pleased to say that the local community, rightly drowned, and many volunteer groups, ensured that the vulnerable people were supported during the difficult time. I've attended a great many engagements. This highlighted, these highlights were our garden competition awards, evening, and of course, our poignant service, our poignant remembrance day parade and service. We also managed to hold an annual civic service before the lockdown ensured, which was an enjoyable morning at St Helen's Church, as I said in the... And my thanks go to Peter Huxtable, Vivica, and his team for arranging the service, and all the dignitaries that followed on there, that was quite important. In September 2009, we appointed a new town clerk, Sabrina Doherty, and her assistant, Sophie Lucas. I would like to thank them especially for supporting me in my role, and for the hard work that they had carried out to make improvements to our council. Finally, I would like to say, I would like to thank all the organisations for their very kind invitations, hospitalities, and for the warm welcome that myself and my wife received when we visited them as councillor Darby, mayor of Stapleford 2019-2020. That's it.
Thank you for that, Ray. Like I said, you'll always be my mayor anyway, so...
Mayor, could I just add something to that?
You said to the town councillor McGrath.
I'd like to thank Ray and his wife in particular for the tremendous service they've given to Stapleford, a true gentleman and his wife, right, that has represented this town the way it should be. I'd also like to thank Sabrina and Sophie for the professional way they've brought this council where it should be. I think we've all had our thoughts about who's this and who should be doing that, but Sabrina and Sophie in particular, well, the pair of them, right, have been immense in sorting one or two problems and ironing things out. So I'd like to thank them two as well, because, and also, Richard, I wish you luck.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay.
Just very kind of you, thank you. So, okay, so thank you for that, and I hope you've all enjoyed it. Is that something that the town clerk will be putting on the website for people to read? Because it's quite interesting, and it's nice for them to see what the council's done in the past year. Will that go on the website?
Yes, Mr Mayor, this is the first time that you've had this kind of a document put together, but I thought it was important because of all the change that happened since the election, you've had a lot of new councillors join. It was important to say what council had actually done and achieved across the year, and I think this is something that should go forward year on year, and we can start to benchmark performance and statistics and things as we start to get more savvy with getting things together in the office. So it's just for the council to note and to approve or publication.
Oh, that's appreciated, and thank you for taking the time to put that document together. Okay, so next item is, oh, I'm lost. Okay, so item 13 is scheme of delegation to consider the attached report of the town clerk. So I'm guessing that's the town clerk?
Yes. If you'd like me to introduce it, the point behind this was, it's part of the review of standing orders. Since the lockdown ensued, looking through the standing orders, the actual delegations to the clerk are quite confusing and conflicting, and the changes that we'd sort of talked about with the committees and being able to have their own powers to make decisions, etc., subject to the arrangements that were agreed previously. The point of this document was to try and make it all clearer and to supplement the other documents that we will have. So we already have financial regulations, and we are reviewing standing orders, we're halfway through doing that, and that will come at another time. But this is really just to seek clarity and accountability really, as to who should be doing what, and what money they can spend, and that sort of thing.
And is this just a note in report, or is there things in there we need to action?
There's nothing to action in there, it's to approve. You do need to have looked through it and make sure that you're happy with it all, and if you're not, then obviously we can look at that and amend, but you do need to have looked at it in detail.
I mean, I was going to suggest with this item on the agenda, that it was the same as Standing Orders 19, because there's a lot of changes and stuff in there, and this isn't me having a go at anybody. It would be nice if the report could be properly looked over by a committee to like scrutinise it, and then perhaps brought back to a future meeting when councillors have, you know, the ones that's on that committee have had more time, not just a week, to sit there and go through it all, because there is a lot of things in there that have implications for the way the council's run. Me personally, I just think that should move to the Finance and General Purpose Committee, and let them have a look at it, and then bring it back at a future meeting for it to be agreed by the whole council.
Mr Mayor, if I may, I totally agree with that.
Well, and if we do that the same as comes on the Standing Orders 19, do you want me to read that out, or can you remember it from earlier?
No, we remember it from earlier, I should think, but...
I think the town clerk, note that we'll move that item to the Finance and General Purpose Committee, and then bring it back to the next council, and I hope everyone's okay with that. So item 14 on the agenda is planning applications. I've obviously got to declare an interest in this, because I'm on planning committee at Brockstour Borough Council. I think I'm all right reading the thing out on here. Obviously, I'm not going to make any comments because I'm on the planning committee, so I'm okay to read it out, because it's just on here. So the first application is Stapleford South East Ward, I'm sure you've all clicked on the link, I can imagine the new leaders had a good look at it. And this is to construct extensions and alterations to existing dwellings, including a balcony and construct two-storey art buildings. And if anyone's got any comments they'd like to raise on that, and then the town clerk can make notes, and then whatever is put forward will be submitted to Brockstour Borough Council for the planning committee to look at. On that first application. Theresa, you look like you might want to, but are you sure?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, um, I've, I've had a look at this application. It is quite an extensive plot, but it's actually quite extensive, um, extensions as well. So as far as I can see, there's no immediate problems with it. But, um, obviously, one of the, uh, extensions is quite close to a neighbouring property. So I think it does depend on whether or not the neighbours have an issue with it or not. Um, I have to say, it's, it's not entirely clear what, uh, what, what the, uh, relationship between the, uh, adjacent dwelling is going to be from the application. But I, I can't raise an objection as such, but I think it, it does depend if, if the neighbours are happy on that one. That's all the comments I've got on that one.
Okay, that's appreciated, and does, does anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, again, if the Borough can check with the neighbours and if they've got no problems, then it just, you should go straight through.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure if the neighbours have got any concerns, they'll, they'll definitely contact the Borough Council, I'm sure they will. Okay, so, um.
Chair.
Councillor McGrath.
Surely, um, I think me and yous argued for a number of years about this. The neighbours need to be aware, right, that there's only three houses either side of the applicant, right, that get the notification. They also get away, well, I don't say we get away with it, but they get away with it by putting something on a lamppost. I'm sure councillor Grindel will tell you that. So perhaps I think we need to be aware that if any residents have got concerns, right, councillor Watts and people like that, or myself, or, or, or you, or people on the planning committee, they need to talk to. But that's always been a problem, that you, you put it on a lamppost, nobody notices it. I think I argued a bit for a long time about Laris in particular, right, that there was only certain notices put up. So I've tried to change that and people don't realise that they'll put it on a lamppost, only three residents either side will get notification. I think as long as we tell residents and then someone will all of a sudden complain, quite rightly, because it might be four doors up.
I'm sure that's something that the Borough councillors can bring up at Brockstour Council as well, thank you. So should we move on to the next application, which is?
Mr Mayor, I've had my, um, I've had my hand up on this one.
Oh, sorry.
Really, really and truly, my, my recommendation for, for this council would be to not, um, give comment on this application. Um, any, any objection that we might have is going to be picked up by the planning officers and the boroughs process anyway. I think it's important to, to consider the, sometimes we can say too much and then we might become white noise as a, as a town council when actually we want to say something as really of note on more contentious applications. So my recommendation on this one would be to not say anything.
Okay, no, that's appreciated. Okay, so if we move on to the next one, which is Stapford North Board, this is one hundred and eleven Pasture Road, Stapford, and it's to construct a single two-storey side and single-storey rear extension. Again, it's been on the agenda for a while, so hopefully if anyone's got any comments or concerns, if you'd like to mention them now, can, can you all click the hands to go down again? Because there's quite a few up, it gets confusing when you're trying to choose. Okay, so is there anyone that wants to speak on that one? No, okay, that's easy, that's, that's easy for the town clerk, thank you for that one. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, we're getting there slowly, item fifteen, which is a finance update, there's A, B, C, D, E and F. It's, it's lots of facts and figures and numbers, so I'm, I'm sure councillor Grindel might have something to say. And I think if we let the town clerk introduce this one.
I'll wait for the town clerk to introduce it first, that's only right.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll start with just A first. This is just to notify you that following recommendation from councillors and confirmation from Broxton that we could do it, um, I did apply for the small business grant of £10,000, which, uh, people that receive the, um, small business rates relief on their, um, NDR bill are, were entitled to apply for. We did receive the £10,000, it was given to us. Um, the only thing is, is that in other councils where I've tried to do this as well on the basis that Broxton gave us this advice, is that we've been rejected as being a precepting authority. And there are some rules, um, apparently in one of the grant schemes, which says that a precepting authority isn't entitled to receive it. So I'm a little bit concerned, um, I don't want to spend it in case it gets clawed back. Um, but unless we're approached by Broxton, I don't know whether or not we should give it back, uh, just offhand anyway. I'm in council's hands really on that point.
Okay, and does anyone have any comments or concerns they'd like to raise on that? Eh?
Mr Mayor. First of all, um, I know about this £10,000, can you hear me? And, um, in my, in my opinion, that the, um, we should actually, uh, write back to the poller. And, and I think the town clerk's already done that, I'm not quite sure. Um, and, um, we hold on to it until we get a reply back. I don't know if the town clerk has had a reply back yet.
Through you, Mr Mayor, just to answer, I haven't actually written to the Borough at this point in time.
Then I, I, I suggest once we get an answer from the Borough, back, back, no problem.
Sabrina, can I come in here?
Of course, yeah, well, it's the best.
Oh, Mr, through the mayor, sorry. Oh, well, I think a number of us, well, probably some of you don't realise the way businesses, uh, have gone through this. And obviously I'd spoke to councillor Carr, councillor Marshall, councillor Adulich and all that. And as you know, Sabrina, we fell in, the town council fell into that category. So I think it's how we, right, let's, let's be honest. Do we need it? I don't know, but I, I think it's how we dispose of it is one. I think clarification on, on how it can go, i.e. through the Healthful Bureau that, you know, that are in, within our building and this and the other. I think we just need to wait and see, right? It's £10,000 that we probably don't need, but it's £10,000 that could be, probably could to good use for the people of Stapford. I mean, I'm not being detrimental here, but it, it, let's do it proper, let's find out if we need to give it back, and if we do, we do. But I'm sure between us all, we'll sort it out.
May I, may I come back, Mr Mayor?
Bushcub.
Uh, right, well, actually councillor John McGrath is exactly right. Uh, I totally agree with him. And as I said earlier, we need to actually find out exactly, because there could be some rules and regulations regarding this. And I wouldn't want us to land up, um, uh, being in a bit of a mess. And that's the last thing any of us want. And obviously, the new leader doesn't want any more headaches since you'll probably get for a while. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Mr Mayor, can I speak?
Yeah, yeah, councillor Frost.
I think if we're entitled to this money and if it comes back that, yes, it's ours, can we not use it as a funding to help the local businesses that have been really badly hit over the last three months of lockdown? You look at those that are just struggling at the moment. I mean, it's got to be done for smaller businesses and independent businesses, not the businesses that have got chains. But it's something to look at and talk about, and that's my idea for it.
Chair through you, chair through you.
Councillor McGrath, yep.
And as Simon's pointed out, I think we need clarification on, on, on where it can be used. And as Si or Deputy Mayor has just said, I think we need to know what that £10,000 can go to, which will be magnif, and then we're doing things proper. If, if they say that £10,000 be distributed, as they say, between the local businesses in the town, that is a plus for both Broxton and us.
Okay. Anyone else?
Uh, yeah, yes, please, Mr Mayor. Um, I just, um, I, again, I, I agree with that notion. There are definitely struggling charities in Stapford at the minute that it could, um, be used towards. I think, um, I'm just wondering if we know if there's any kind of limitation, um, in terms of time. So, you know, how long have Borough Council got to claim that money back if, if, if we're not entitled to it? Is there a limitation on that time or is it just an indefinite, um, amount of time in which they can claim it back?
Okay, I'm, I'm sure that's something that the town clerk can find out by contacting the, the guys that, I can't remember his name, the guy at Broxton who does all the money and stuff, the finance.
Ex-leader. Chair through you, ex-leader. The, the two people that dealt, or the three people that dealt with, were Gre, councillor Marshall, councillor Carr and Paul Adcock. So if Sabrina wants to contact them, it, it might be an easy way and put all his minds at rest, eh?
Uh, yeah, I'll, that's, I'll do that and then I can report back to the next meeting, Mr Mayor.
Okay, so that, that's A, isn't it? So B is, uh, is everyone okay with, with that as the resolution for A? Is that okay, the town clerk finds out, spends it all, gets it back, okay? So B is summary of receipts and payments to date. Again, that's attached, and again, I'll let the town clerk do this as well.
Uh, thanks, Mr Mayor, just a note really, and just to show that obviously we are down on our, um, takings for the latins of the building because we've had to be shut. Uh, Weight Watchers are wanting to come back, uh, and we've just done the risk assessments to enable them to do that. Uh, we're just waiting for them to do their own risk assessments, and at least that will start coming back. The other groups are not so interested at the moment because, um, they're sort of all elderly and high risk. So they're going to take a little bit longer to, to come back. Um, but just so that you're aware, we are down on our income on that basis.
I know, that's appreciated, and is, is everybody, that, okay with that? Once we can move on to C, or has anyone got any questions on B?
Mr, Mr Mayor, um, when we come to, um, C and D, um, and so forth, right down to F, uh, then I would like a, a word to say at the end after we've heard from a town clerk, please.
Okay, so if you, if you want, instead of me keep saying A, B, C and D, if we let the town clerk do, do C, D, E and F, and then we'll take questions at the end if that's okay with everybody.
Okay, so, uh, the item C is just to approve the payments that have been made up to June twenty twenty. Uh, what I'm trying to do with this, with the software, is do them on a month-by-month basis. So obviously there are more payments that have been made in July, uh, but you won't get those till the, the next meeting for retrospective approval. Uh, most of it is, um, stuff that you've approved already in terms of, um, existing contracts and, um, other things that you've approved in previous meetings. Uh, there's only a few things which you haven't approved, and that's the skips for the, um, allotments, uh, which, um, we talked about getting. There's been a lot of rubbish basically left over the years and we've just been trying to improve, um, the sites and, and start to help the new tenants on the new plots that have been let. We've let quite a few more, uh, than we've had in previous years, and there's been a lot of mess for them to clean up. So, uh, we've helped them by doing that. So that's, it's retrospective approval for doing those, really.
Okay.
Um, if, if you want me to move on and do the rest, that's.
Please.
Uh, so then item D, um, it just is for noting, that's the money that you've got in the bank as at the seventeenth of July. Uh, the neighbourhood plan grant, um, the consultant didn't invoice us. Um, obviously Covid sort of knocked us all for six, uh, he didn't invoice us, so I've had to give the money back. Uh, but we're in the process of reapplying for it to, to have it back again, which seems a nonsensical procedure, but it's what we have to do. So, uh, hopefully we will get that money back very shortly and then he will invoice us, uh, and we could get that cleared away. Um, and then item F, this is a new report, um, it's a, a item that we've been able to get, um, activated on our finance software, uh, just to give you an overview of what we have in balances and how they've been allocated, um, across the year. So this is what was in budget. Obviously, if you want to, uh, move those around or do things differently, then that's something that we can discuss at the finance meeting, um, and then bring that for council approval.
Okay, no, that's appreciated, thank you. And so that was, that was A, B, C, D, E and F. Does anyone want any questions on that, councillor Grindel, I'm sure you are.
No, uh, not a question, because first of all, I wish to praise the town clerk for the amount of work and the easy way of reading her new sheets. Um, I think she's done a tremendous job considering the situation that we've been in since March. Um, I'm looking at, I'm looking at, um, income from up to the twenty ninth for the sixth of this year, which is the latest one. All these figures, uh, add up exactly really nicely. Uh, obviously, the town clerk did say that there were a few, uh, incomes that are not going to happen for a while. I'm sure we'll get back up again. And, um, once again, I'll thank the town clerk because, um, it, all her sheets make total sense and they all add up and subtract, and I'm really happy to see it. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. So do we move on to item, we're, we're done with the finance update now, though, is the town clerk okay with that?
Uh, yes, yes, Mr Mayor, that's fine.
Okay, so I get an echo, I hear you say it in there, then it calls out on the computer.
All right.
Okay, um, okay, so the next item on the agenda is item sixteen, which says cancellation of events. It actually says to formally agree to cancel all planned events for twenty twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. I, I was going to make a suggestion, if everyone's okay with that, instead of it actually, and, and, and tell me if I'm wrong in doing this, where it says formally agree to cancel all planned events, I would actually suggest, um, events, if we, uh, are looked at events at a time, because this, you know, the, the rules and regulations are kind of near enough changing daily. There, there, there might be nothing we can do, and, and I hope that isn't the case. But there might be certain things that we can do, and I just thought if we cancelled all events for twenty twenty and twenty twenty, up to twenty twenty-one, we, we could end up missing out on something. So I just thought if, if we cancel events, um, we look at events, obviously through the events committee, um, event at a time and then just see, because there might be some things we can do, there might not. But obviously, it, it's, it's open to discussion with you guys. And I think councillor Patterson had hand up first and then it looked like councillor Grindel after that, unless he's just putting this screen. So councillor Patterson, please.
Um, yeah, I agree, it would be nice to look at things on a, a one-to-one basis as they come up. Um, and also maybe we could, we could think about some virtual events, you know, if, if this thing is going to linger on or if we get a second spike, it might be nice to think of things, you know, that we can bring in the community to get together, um, by some advertly. So I'll just leave it there, thank you.
Uh, thank you for that, councillor Patterson, councillor Grindel, and then it's councillor, councillor Needham ever hand up, and then councillor Frost.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, um, no, let's not run before we can walk here. The simple reason is that, yes, the, we've got a long way to go. Um, let's not rush this unless, uh, under the legislations we have to. Um, we don't want to lose money, but we want to actually put a good thing on for the whole of the town. And, um, I would like us, I'd like to see this not scrapped in any shape or form. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Theresa Needham, then it's councillor Frost, and then I think, is, is that MC with all the numbers and what? Is that councillor, um?
Councillor Kearney, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Kearney, okay, it's weird, we're all the numbers, so it's Theresa.
Yeah, sorry about that.
And councillor Kearney last, or not last, but, uh, sorry.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, yeah, I kind of wanted to echo what Sue said, it would be nice to kind of keep it open and addressed by a, a case-by-case, um, thing. But obviously, some things are going to be coming up very, very soon, such as the VJ events. Um, I suspect we will have to do something virtual for that. Um, I know when we were discussing the VE and VJ day events for this year, we were very much on the back foot because obviously we didn't fully form a full council by July. And with planning a year in advance, we had less than a year to get it off the ground. So I think obviously with the work that was done for VE and VJ day already sort of in, in, in hand, it'd be really nice if we could then say, right, okay, we are actually planning that for twenty twenty-one. Um, obviously the Olympics got cancelled, so I don't see why we can't celebrate the seventy-sixth anniversary of VE Day. Um, but obviously, uh, it's, it's all going to be subject to change. So I think we need a little bit of a, a think about payments and maybe getting some sort of insurance for if things are cancelled. But obviously, that's going to be expensive. So I think there, there needs to be a bit of a review there. Um, obviously, the biggie is the, um, Armistice Day celebrations or remembrance, um, date. Um, that's probably very questionable about where we are going to be in the. date. That's probably very questionable about where we are going to be in November at the start. I wouldn't like to say that we're not going to do anything, but I think we need to be very careful about getting a big crowd into the middle of Stapleford that soon. So that's just my thoughts on it. Thanks.
Just before we move on to councillor Frost, there is an actual VJ event happening this year. Brockstow Borough Council are currently organising something. I can't tell you anymore. It's not that I don't want to. I don't know anymore, but they're organising something in the four main towns. So we're quite lucky. We are getting something. And as soon as they let us know, I'll make sure that they let, you know, the town clerk know and then she can pass it on to all the councillors. So if councillor Frost would like to go next and then it's councillor Kearney after that, please.
Yeah, I'd like to echo what everybody else has said. It needs to be done by a case-by-case event. Now, for the Remembrance Day, I think whether we do something or not, the combined services have said they're doing something. And I think if we're going to do something and if it's possible to do something, then move it from Wall to Park Square to the car park next door, if we can do social distancing. Because then we've got the whole car park, we can lock off and do your social distancing. It's going to have to be a cut-down affair. I don't think we can have the bands marching or the scouts, et cetera, marching. But we can have a cut-down affair, but it's something we've got to look at in the events committees before we go any further. But that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
I appreciate that. And councillor Kearney and then I think it's councillor McGrath's got underwaved as well.
Yeah, don't really need to repeat everything everyone else has said. I kind of concur. I just thought I'd come back on Theresa's point about insurance for events that I think we did actually have insurance taken out for the VE Day event. And I think we are planning, well, we were planning certainly to continue that in that vein of getting insurance. And yeah, I think councillor Frost's got a good idea there to look at different spaces where we can socially distance for things like remembrance, which obviously is, you know, it's an annual recurring event and it's very important to the community, so.
Thank you for that, councillor McGrath.
Again, Chair, through you, totally we on everything because everything's gone. Sorry for saying it tits up, right? I think we need to plan properly. And Remembrance Day is one in particular that is a massive event within the town of Stapleford. So I think as Si said, right, we need to look at certain things that need to be done and we need to plan it properly so we don't forget what's gone off. And I also think if we do go ahead, the problem being is that the patriotism or patriotism or if people, people will still turn up, which will then causes a problem about restricting this, that and the other, won't it? So I think if we plan it proper, if you restrict people, it causes a major problem, I think. So my personal view, I don't like saying this, we added that, is that I think we should wait, right, and have virtual things in certain places with invited people, but not have a major event like the Undercon Club. People will still turn up. That's all I'm saying.
And I appreciate that. Thank you, councillor McGrath. Did anyone else want to speak on that? Because there's loads of hands still popped up. If you can put them down again when you don't.
Mr Mayor, if I could just sort of come in on a couple of points that were made there. First of all, as ever, the devil is in the detail. This is to talk about cancelling planned events because obviously I've made the decision that we're cancelling the VE Day. The VJ Day hasn't been organised because we didn't know if we'd be able to and we still can't get crowds together. And obviously, the garden competition, we haven't run that either because we didn't know what we're allowed to do. So it's more about saying, agreeing that we've cancelled the things that are literally immediately here. And then obviously, if the events committee wants to get together and sort of plan all the things going forward, then that's fine. I wasn't trying to stop that at all, just to make it clear that these things aren't going to happen and that councillors are okay with that, basically. Also, sorry, the insurance. So I didn't spend any money basically trying to get the VE Day event off the ground. So I just wanted to clarify, there wasn't any insurance purchased, although we got quotes for it. Just as everything happened, I just stopped doing things on there, just so we didn't lose anything.
No, that's appreciated. Thank you. So is everybody okay with that?
Can I just jump in quickly, Mr Mayor?
Who's that? Simon? Yeah, it's councillor Frost, yeah?
Yeah, I agree with everything that you've just said. The thing is that you can now get Covid cover. I do not know how much it is, but it's something that you can look into it. One of the medieval groups is looking for next year. That's how I know. The other thing is if we do do something on the other car parks, maybe we could have it televised to the pubs locally, so they go in to watch them there or in a town hall or somewhere. But it's something we need to discuss at the events committee because we're getting away from what the question is. So, yeah.
So we're all good with that? Okay, no, that's appreciated, everybody. Thank you for everyone's input. So the next item on the agenda is 17, non-attendance to the councillor. I actually think we can miss that because the councillor was in the meeting earlier, so I think that's okay. Where's the town clerk gone again?
Yes, no, that's correct, Chair. That was just in case she didn't manage to make it, but she did, so the clock is reset.
Yeah, it was nice to see nearly a full hour, so we get, you know, that was nice that she was there. So that makes it a little bit easier as well, doesn't it? So the next item on the agenda is item 18. We're nearly there. Remove of asbestos shed at Bezalane allotments and there's a cost of £980 plus VAT. So I suppose the town clerk wants to come in on that one and then if anyone's got any questions after the town clerk's given us a bit of an update.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. This is one, it's the Bezalane allotment site and this plot holder has had the plot for about 14 years. And we have no idea who the previous tenant was. The records don't go back correctly. So we couldn't try and reclaim the money for removing the asbestos shed. But unfortunately, it's basically, it's held up by vegetation. It is dangerous. But I obviously didn't want to spend that amount of money without coming to council first. So it's up to council whether or not they want to help the tenant get rid of it or whether you want to try and sort of share the cost with them or what you want to do, basically.
Okay, so first we've got councillor Simon Frost and then we've got councillor Sue Patterson after that, please.
I've got no problem with taking it down. It's asbestos and it needs to be dealt with. However, the one thing I would say, if possible, if the weeds will hold it up a bit longer, if we wait until the end of the growing seed and when there's less people on there, we can take it down and the rain will also mitigate any asbestos that decides to fly off. So that's the only thing that I've got on that.
Okay, councillor Patterson and then it's councillor Grindel.
Yeah, I mean, really Si's covered it. I think we've got an obligation. If we can't find who actually owned the sheds where they've removed. I think if it does get damaged, it poses a danger to allotment holders, you know. So I think the safe removal and our cost is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Grindel. And then I think it's, did councillor Buffingravie's hand up? And then I think it was the town clerk after that, if I see it right.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The asbestos, it doesn't matter if it's 90% asbestos or 10% asbestos. The price of removing it is not bad at all. And I suggest that, as councillor Frost said, it'd be better to get this taken down in the wintertime. There'll be less garden holders around and the job can be cleared properly, obviously. So yes, I will agree it should be done, should be paid for by the council. And once it's done, we don't have got to worry about it anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. I forgot who was next now.
I took my hand down because I agree with what's been said.
Oh, okay. And I appreciate that. Thank you. And then it looks like councillor Brand's probably flapping his hand about and he's not turned it off again.
No, I haven't. No, it's just to think of the future, really. Is there any statement, is there any banning of building asbestos sheds in the future on allotments?
Through the mayor, yes, they're not supposed to put buildings up unless we approve them. So we find out what it is that they're putting up before they do it and agree or not. In terms of the waiting until winter, the tenant does want it removed now because they want to have a shed to put their tools in for whilst they're working. They can't use it at the moment because obviously it's dangerous. The neighbouring plot holder has been contacted and they're happy for the workman to go across his plot to get to the shed. It's in a really awkward position. So he's happy for it to be done and sorted. And obviously, we've got a professional company that will do it properly anyway.
Oh, brilliant.
Is everyone happy with that? Oh, hang on, councillor Darby's got his hand up.
Yeah, this particular shed on Bezalane, I think you'll find that when they renewed the fence, I think they just took it up to the corn because they couldn't go behind the actual shed itself, so they wouldn't disturb anything. Now, asbestos is all right as long as you don't disturb it. So it's got to be a registered company that takes it down. But just be aware that you might be, you might be taking or having a job to put the fence back because there's two fences there. There's an outer one and an inner one because when they put the new fence up, they put it inside the line of the fence. Because the county council own the bit of land and the pavement on the outside. So there might be some more expense, although it's not a great deal or something. They'd love to put the fence back, you know, put a piece of fence in there, okay?
Can I just come back, Mr Mayor?
Can you just wait? Can councillor Frost go first, get his hand up and then councillor?
Sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah, I agree totally. If the guy wants it gone to put up a new shed, then it's got to be gone. It's got to be done safely. And as Ray said, at the end of the day, if we have to move a little bit of fencing and we move it and we put it back, it's got to go, simplest.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, you're quite right. And councillor Darby's quite right, obviously. And this particular shed has to be taken down and treble wrapped as it happens these days on the site before it can be removed. I hope that that is done.
No, appreciated. Thank you. So is this something we need to vote on? Where's the town clerk gone again?
Yeah, sorry. I'm sat with Gray because it's just easier than having to be.
No, that's okay.
Yes, if you can, if you want to just vote that you're happy for us to go ahead and get there, that would be great. Thank you.
Does this need to be recorded vote or is it just if anyone wants to abstain, abstain against it?
That's fine to do it that way.
Is everyone okay with this then, what we do? Any objections or any objections?
Get on with it.
That's me told, isn't it? Right, it looks like they're going to shed knock down then, sort of. Thank you. Item 19 says request for grant aid and it says here to consider a request for grant aid supporting the summer £5,000 for the helpful bureau. Just two quick things before I open this one up. One, I've got a clear interest in this because it is a group that I've been helping a lot. And also, can I just clarify with the town clerk, was this a request for section 137? Because that's obviously a lot more than we've actually got in the account.
Yes, so it's, we've done the grants form saying it's section 137. That's the power of last resort. We do have the power to give grants otherwise, so we don't need to sort of get muddied around with the terminology there. We have only set aside £3,000 towards grants for this year. So it is far more than what we would normally look like to give. What I think this is about is essentially they want their rent, they want a rent-free period for the year, basically, because of the funding that they've, they think that they've not had because of all the Covid and extra stuff that they've been doing. Presumably, they're sort of thinking it would come from this £10,000 grant that we've received because that was really our intent behind getting that. But until we know if we can spend it, then obviously we can't give it away.
So just before we open this up to debate then, is it because they're obviously, I'm not saying whether they should or shouldn't because that's nothing to do with me. I've got a secreted interest in this one. But they've applied to Brockstow Borough Council for some funding and what happened at Brockstow was they gave them the funding that they've had previously. And the second bit, instead of saying yes or no and voting on it, they've actually said can they come back with a proper report? But you've kind of just said what they actually wanted it for. Is this something, if the town clerk can clarify, because this isn't basically what we've got in section 137, does this need to go to another committee or is it something that can be dealt with now? I'll leave that to the town clerk to tell us and then we can open it up for discussion.
Well, at the moment, the terms of reference to the finance committee is literally to make a recommendation. So it has to come back to councillor in any event and clearly they would like a quick decision because they need to understand where their funding position is for the year. So if we can decide this evening, that would be great, both for them and obviously for us being able to sort it out for them.
I've got loads of hands up here, so I'm going to start with the bottom of what I can see on my screen. So I think if I go with councillor Kearney, if your hand's up, then it's councillor Grindel, councillor Needham and then it's councillor Frost who's at the top, if that's okay with you guys.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I should actually declare an interest in this as well because I've actually been talking to Margaret about fundraising options and she has sort of given me a good rundown of sort of why they're in the situation that they're in. And obviously, that was incompetence, so I don't want to share too much of those details, but they are desperately in need of money. And I would support this, but I think I will probably have to abstain on the vote given that I've also offered to assist them in some grant funding applications. But I think, I think the question that council might have is what effect this will have on the budget if we effectively waive their rent for the year? How far back is that going to actually put us?
Essentially, you have a good, healthy reserve balance. So if you want to do this, yes, it throws out your budget because obviously it's £5,000. We're not getting an income. But it's not like you don't have the money sat in the reserves pot.
Yeah, thank you very much. That was sort of what I was, what I was thinking was the reserves were the best option.
Thank you. Councillor Grindel.
Yeah, two things here. I understand exactly why we want the money, obviously. So town clerk, we've had an official written request from them, yes?
Yes.
Okay. And secondly, this sort of thing and other things like annex and other things like that normally, normally would go through the budget report for 2021, 21 or 22. But if you mind to take some out of reserves, you have obviously a right to do that. But the thing is, if you've got £3,000 in the 137, then you're going to have to keep some of that for other things. So if you're going to take it, you would have to take the whole lot out of reserves. That would be what I would suggest.
Okay, sorry, I think it was councillor, was it councillor Needham and then it was councillor Frost after that, I think.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Like Sabrina said, I think it does depend on what that £10,000 grant is actually for because I was under the impression that it was for us to provide rent relief. I'm just wondering if Rhino have also asked for rent relief as well? Because obviously, if we do it for one, we're kind of obliged to do it for the other. And it might be that we end up spending that full £10,000 on that. So I wonder if Sabrina could clarify that.
Thank you. Yes, Rhino haven't asked us directly for it. What I've done is helped them apply for the discretionary business grant because they are entitled to that. The problem that they've got is that when the leasing of this building was done, there should have been three premises set up basically for the NMDR team to bill us all individually. The helpful bureau do have that, but I'm not sure they were entitled under the small business grant to apply for the £10,000 themselves because they're a charity and there were certain rules about it. Rhino were eligible but didn't have their own number, so they couldn't apply under the first wave. But they have been applied under the discretionary grant and I've not heard any more from him. So I don't know whether or not he's actually received that, but I can check that for us. I think that was all the answer to your question, wasn't it?
Thank you. councillor Frost next, I think.
Yeah, for me, I would like to see the helpful bureau actually get this because they've done an awful lot of good for people that need it at this time. for people that need it at this time of year, the elderly, disabled, et cetera. People are fearful, are very, very fearful at the moment. And with somebody popping around just or on the end of the phone talking to them, it helps an awful lot. And that's one of the things that they, along with other groups, have been doing. So I think it's a bit of a no brainer. We need them to feel as though they're a valued member of this society. And as a council, I think we have a right, well, no, an obligation to help them when they need help themselves.
Okay, is that councillor Sue Patterson? Councillor Patterson got her hand up as well.
Yeah, yeah, I think I need to declare a non-pro, I can't say it. And I need to declare an interest, but non-protruer, is it?
Non-procunary.
Sorry, I've had my jabs and my mouth don't.
I can never say that word anyway.
Yeah, no.
Non-procunary.
Yeah, because I've been working closely as well with the helpful bureau. And I agree, they have done some fantastic work across not only Stapleford, but I know they have been helping across the borough as well. And it would be a shame to, I think the actual charity has got great potential. And it would be awful for it to fold because of this pandemic and the circumstances they find themselves in. So yeah, I think, I think we should really consider in favour of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McGrath?
Well, again, I don't know whether, I think first of all, what we've all done in Stapleford has been magnificent, right? Regardless of us political beliefs or whatever, I think we've all pulled together. We've all added our ups and downs and this and the other. But we added out the helpful bureau does need help. So I think we need to definitely give them, as I'd say, some wedge, right? And I think the better thing is, obviously, if me and Si go into it, if we're all under one umbrella, it helps more that we all know what's going off and this is controlled by hopefully the town council and Brockstow and other people. So everything is coming out from one umbrella and working well throughout the community. And with our connections and all the people we know, some people we don't, but it'd help even more. Helpful Bureau needs some help. So I believe let's help them. And as Sabrina pointed out earlier about the funding, I don't blow my own some bit, but I have helped on certain occasions. I think we need to stipulate what the ten thousand is for between Rhino, Helpful Bureau and this and the other, right? And sort out what they need. And from that, move on and give them more so they can spread out and sort everything out. Because they are a great, you know, they really help as they are the helpful bureau.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, just to cut in there, I'm not actually sure that we can give grant money to Rhino. It's a private business and we're not allowed to help private businesses. It's this thing called state aid, which we're not allowed to do. So.
No, Sabrina, I hadn't said no to Rhino. No, I'm on about the helpful bureaus. Rhino, I believe, has got the grant.
Right, okay.
Right. So I think basically, simple thing to do is talk to Rhino, the helpful bureau and see who's got one, who's not, whatever. But from the onset, we need to give helpful bureau some money now.
Thank you. I think councillor Tim Hallam and then I think it's councillor Kearney and then it will be councillor Frost.
Thanks, Richard. The, the, I'm going to play devil's advocate on this because I think we need somebody to just provide a counter narrative on this. And don't assume for a second that I don't want to help the helpful bureau. I think they're amazing. And I've had very interesting conversations sat in there in the office and finding out what they do and what their funding solution is. We also, as a council, have the obligation to the public to make sure that their money is spent responsibly. And obviously, there's a great temptation as councillors to say, yes, have some money for this, have some money for that. I understand from what the town clerk said that there is a report that, or a request formally to the town council. It would have been nice to see that in this and be able to appraise that in its own right as councillors. Because I know that the helpful bureau have applied for funding from the county and from the borough and from the town. And I think it's important to get a, to get a picture from them as to what they're planning to do with this funding so that we can ensure and reassure our electorate and taxpayers that it is being spent responsibly. So is, I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote against it. But I think that we need to be a little bit more diligent because this isn't our money we're spending. It's Stapleford's money.
No, that's appreciated. Thank you. Who's, we've got SP. Who's that?
That'll be Sue.
Oh, sorry. Councillor Patterson. Sorry, councillor Patterson's next, I think.
No, no, that's me. Not me. My name's on mine. So I don't know who SP is.
Oh, okay. Okay, we'll jump across from that one. Then we'll go to M. Is M, is that councillor Kearney? I'm not sure now.
Yeah, I think, I think it is. I have already spoke. So I'm going to be, I'm going to be really concise. There are genuine reasons why the helpful bureau is short of money that it would not normally be short of. It is not anything to do with misspending. It's actually a lack of funding that they would normally have. I can't go into any further detail about that. But, but all I can say is, council, if you will take my word that they haven't misspent anything, they just have funding missing that they would normally have.
I feel obliged to come back on that, Richard, if I may, Mr Mayor. I never said that they'd misspent anything. Never, never, never at all. I think there's information out there to have and it's, it's our job to see the information before making a decision. In this case, it's that it doesn't exist. But perhaps in the future, if something's sensitive, then we ought to go into closed session before making a decision on it. But I think it is our, it's our responsibility to be diligent about the public money. And not being in possession of all the knowledge and taking people's word for it is not really good enough for a council going forward.
Yeah, fair enough. I concede to that. Totally understand. It was just a request. And if you don't want to do that, then that's fine.
Okay. Has anyone else got their hands up? Because your hands all over the place here. Can you turn them off again if you don't need them to be up and then councillor Frost?
Right, yeah. If I am right in thinking, we have a mayor's charity, don't we? Which we raise money for in, in the town. Why not make the helpful bureau? No, we don't have it. In that case, then I will shut up. Thank you very much.
Okay, so back to town clerk then to summarise on that one. And then you need, we're voting on this, aren't we?
Yes, Mr Mayor. It's essentially, do you want to grant the fund? It is, it is a request for them to be let off their rent, basically. But obviously, they'll want the actual money to be spent there because they've already started paying towards the rent for this year. And that is a total sum of five thousand pounds. And it's where that will come from. Councillor Grendel has suggested it just comes all from reserves and we retain the three thousand pounds for other grants that might come forward.
Okay, so we'll go to the vote on that.
Our second, our second one, councillor Grendel said.
Okay, thank you for that. So we've got a closer, we've got a second. Do we need to do a recorded vote on this?
I would like to request a recorded vote, please, Mr Mayor.
Okay, that's good enough for me. Okay, so I'm going to have to grab another form off the town clerk because we've done this one out that I had earlier. Can I just grab one of those off you?
If you, if you just want to read out the names and I'll.
We have a second for a recorded vote.
No, not with the town council. It's just one council. I can request it. Okay, right. I'm going to read the list out and the town clerk's going to tick it off. So we're voting to approve that we give five thousand, five thousand pounds to the helpful bureau. I'll say, is it to help them with the rent, isn't it? I think that's what we're voting for. So, okay, so again, it's either for abstaining, sorry, for against or abstaining. So we start at the top. Councillor Appleton?
Four.
Councillor Boffinger?
Four.
I will get his name right, won't I? So sorry, you'll have to give me lessons. I'm terrible. And I apologize as well. Councillor Briggs?
No problem.
Four.
Councillor Brown?
I've still got doubts. I mean, the, if it's for rent, what's to stop them from packing up halfway through it and taking the five thousand? But overall, I'll go for four.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Derby?
Four.
All right, councillor Appleton's not here. Councillor Frost?
That'll be a four.
Councillor Gould?
Four.
Councillor Grendel?
It looks like he's disconnected, Mr Mayor.
Yeah, it says on the right hand side, he's left the conversation. So I'll do it with one else and I'll shout back. And if he's not here, he can't be out, can it? So councillor Jay Hallam?
Who has given her apologies and left earlier.
She certainly did. And I did actually hear her say, sorry. Councillor Tim Hallam?
I'm four.
Councillor Hallam Davies?
Four.
Councillor Hawkins?
Four.
Councillor Kearney?
I'm going to abstain because I'm not sure if my interest is procunary or not.
Yeah, that, 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 it's better to be safe, isn't it? Councillor McRae, that's me. I've got to be the same. I've got to abstain on that one as well. Councillor McGrath?
Four.
Councillor Needham?
Four.
Councillor Patterson?
Four.
And we'll go back to councillor Grendel, just in case he's come back again. No, he's not there. So I'm taking it that without even the town clerk shouting about that, that's passed. So thank you, everybody. And I'm sure they appreciate the kind word you've said about them as well. So next item on the agenda, we're nearly there. Item twenty, renewal of lease for the annexed building to approve the fixing of the council seal to the new lease on same terms as previously agreed with Rhino Plumbing and Heating. Two councillors required to witness.
Chair, if I can just come in on that, just to explain that this was, the renewal of the lease was considered by the Finance and General Purposes Committee some time ago. The minutes did come to the council for approval. And basically, what they said is they were happy to continue with the same terms. So I've instructed a lawyer to do the necessary for the paperwork to get that sorted. And we do need to affix a seal to do it. It's a deed. So it needs to be done that way. So I would suggest it be the mayor and deputy mayor that sign it if everybody else is happy with that.
Okay, is that something that needs to be done now? I was going to say could councillor?
No, it's just to sort it out, ready for when it does need to happen. The lease is actually two years out of date. It should have been renewed in twenty eighteen. It's an annual lease. But it's taken a while to sort of get it round to this point. So going forward, it will be done on an annual basis.
Okay, so is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
And anyone against or any questions? No, I thought I heard councillor Grendel then. I must be hearing things. Okay, so the last item on the agenda, well, it's nearly the last one, is date and time of next meeting to approve the attached schedule of meetings. I guess everybody's seen that. And I'm guessing it's kind of like other councils, we approve it if you want to, as it is now. But then meetings sometimes have to be changed, don't they? It can't be helped. So I suppose if we approve what's there now, you're happy with that.
And can I just hop in here a second, please, Mr Mayor? I did.
Just in a can.
Thank you. I did, I did have a quick conversation with Sabrina last week. Obviously, there's no HR meeting on there for a while. And we did discuss that we might need one sooner rather than later. So could I propose, I think we said the fourteenth of August. I know we don't really like to meet in summer. But I do think there are urgent issues we need to discuss on that.
And do you have someone to second that proposal?
I will second it. Councillor Gould.
Okay, thank you, councillor Gould. Looks like lots of people, but councillor will beat you all. So that's, that's true. And is everyone okay with the rest of the scheduled meetings?
Yes.
Okay, so just before I close this meeting, if it's okay, I just wanted to say thank you to people. There's a lot of councillors, there's some that's not here today. There's a lot that are there now. It's been doing a hell of a lot of stuff the past, what is it, four months now, five months? I don't even know what date it is now. They've stopped clapping on a Thursday. But I just personally wanted to thank everybody because I know there's lots of people been doing, whether it's fundraising on the streets, whether people's been collecting food from various places. I think we're a really good bunch of scroungers, aren't we, between us all? And, you know, there's lots of people out there that I'm sure they benefit, you know, the way, the way we're doing it. We're all doing it different. I don't think none of us are right. None of us are certainly wrong. We're all, we're all doing it in our own little way. And I just wanted to personally thank each and every one of you. And I'm sure there's many people out there that would like to thank you. And then they probably don't even know what some of you's doing because that's just how it is. People just get on with stuff. So from me, I just wanted to say thank you to each and every one of you and keep up what you're doing. I appreciate it. And I know other people do. So yeah, thank you. Thank you to all of you. And on that, I think we'll close the meeting. So yeah, that one too, that's it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that last comment, Richard.
Yeah. And can I just say, very well chaired, nicely done for your first one.
Yes.
Well done, Richard.
Yeah, I've been watching Ray.
Well done, mate.
No, no.
I will try my best. And if I get anything wrong, just call me up. That's with it. Thank you and good night.